Son de la ciudad de Los Ángeles. Viven en la ciudad de Los Ángeles, son de bajos ingresos y buscan diferentes servicios. Tenemos acceso a comida, hacemos distribuciones de comida dos veces al mes. También tenemos programación para jóvenes del grado seis al doce. Y también tenemos nuestro programa de servicios intensivos, a donde podemos trabajar con las familias en sus metas, ya sea de empleo, sus metas de vivienda, sus metas de asesoramiento financiero. Podemos trabajar con ellos en esos servicios y esos son los tipos de familia que vienen a nuestro centro.
There's a lot of people here, specifically in Koreatown, that many times are hidden and they don't go out into the public to request services. So we do a lot of our reach, we can do it in person, flyers, we talk to people to ensure that those most in need receive the services they need in their community.
The Community Investment for Families Department oversees the family source system and in total, we have 20 family source centers that are located throughout the city in the areas with the highest rate of poverty. The comprehensive services that we make available through the family source system are like no other system in the city and we're just so proud to be able to lift up their work and celebrate this grand opening today.
With alarming cases of minors falling into prostitution, Assemblymember Mike Gibson and L.A. City Attorney Heidi Felstein Soto seek to introduce more protections. Assembly Bill 2419 will provide measures for law enforcement to keep victims safe.
Assembly Bill 2419 will authorize a search warrant to be issued on the grounds that there is evidence of a minor being solicited for an act of prostitution.
I'm very pleased to have Assemblymember Mike Gibson here to introduce Assembly Bill 2419. It's an incredibly important bill to hold predators accountable for the trafficking of minors along the Figueroa Quarter.
We know all too well that our kids are being pulled into sex trafficking and as a result of that, these predators, these pimps, the worst of the worst, are seeking our children, they're threatening, intimidating and killing them.
It's incredibly difficult to prove a case because our children are scared and intimidated to speak or to come forward or testify against their predators. And so what this bill does is it enables a law enforcement officer to go to court to get a search warrant, to search the text and the phone messages of a minor based on probable cause and evidence that the minor is being solicited for prostitution. Kids need to be protected by the state, especially in circumstances where, as Assemblymember Gibson said, their parents are not in a position to protect them.
The famous Hollywood Walk of Fame may soon change its name to the Hollywood Lane of Fame. With 3.6 miles of protected bike and bus lanes connecting Hollywood and Los Feliz, Angelenos and visiting movie fans will benefit from a more accessible and safe Hollywood.
This is the ninth and Hollywood holds the world spotlight. The annual Academy Awards and the bestowing of the coveted Oscars has a glittering audience on hand to hear Audrey Hepburn announce the best actor.
We know that the millions of people who come to L.A., they're going to think to come to Hollywood.
We're on Hollywood and Vine, right in the heart of Hollywood, starting a project where we're going to put 3.6 miles of protected bike lane and go right through the heart of Hollywood all the way to Los Feliz.
We administer the Hollywood Walk of Fame. 10 million visitors from around the world come to the Hollywood Walk of Fame every year.
We need to make it more walkable, more bikeable, make it easier for folks to get here. And so installing those protected bike lanes and dedicated bus only lanes means it'll make it easy for people to come here, to shop here, to play here and enjoy this iconic corridor.
This project is a high priority for L.A. DOT. Hollywood between Lyman and Gower has seen a high proportion of severe injuries and deaths as a result of traffic crashes. We aim to work very closely with community members, with community-based organizations and partners. We also see a lot of opportunity to create a safer, more connected, more accessible Hollywood.
The more beautiful and accessible and safe that we can make Hollywood Boulevard, the better it is for our tourists who come here and for the larger community.
I know you Americans are famous for your hospitality, but this is really ridiculous.
First Community Outreach Court Program. Non-perishable food drive, accepting donations, and the general manager of the LADWP is honored. These stories up next on City Beat.
Los Angeles City Attorney Heidi Felstein Soto announced the start of Community Outreach Court, which assists unhoused individuals by removing legal roadblocks. Launched in September 2023, in partnership with the Office of the Mayor, L.A. County, L.A. Superior Court and others, Community Outreach Court addresses criminal misdemeanors in a community setting. It is the first program of its kind in the city of Los Angeles, offering social support, housing assistance, warrant recall, expungements and other services. Community Outreach Court is held on the third Thursday of the month at Skid Row Community Refresh Spot, a 24-hour public safe space offering showers, restrooms, washers and dryers and supportive services. For more information, visit cityattorney.lacity.gov/news. L.A. Sanitation City Facilities Recycling Program, CFRP, is hosting a food drive and accepting donations through Friday, May 3rd. Non-perishable food items are requested, including canned goods, foods in jars, packaged foods and shelf-stable beverages. Food drives are held throughout the year by L.A. sanitation staff to benefit the L.A. community. Donated food will be provided to the Los Angeles Regional Food Bank, St. Francis Center, L.A. San's Liveability Services Division and Insight Safe participants. Non-perishable food donations can be dropped off at six L.A. sanitation facilities across the city, Monday through Friday, 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. For more information, visit lacitysan.org. Los Angeles Department of Water and Power, LADWP, Board of Commissioners, honored the general manager of LADWP, Marty Adams, for 40 years of service. Beginning as an entry-level engineer in 1984, Adams has worked in systems operations, including 10 years as Director of Water Operations. Adams had roles restoring water service after the Northridge earthquake, running a $2 billion water quality improvement project and developing the Headworks Reservoir. In 2019, Adams took over as the department's general manager, leading 11,000 employees delivering water and power utilities to 4 million Los Angeles residents. Although he is set to retire, Adams will assist the LADWP until the next general manager is in place. For more information on the Los Angeles Department of Water and Power, visit ladwp.com.
Alvera Street turned into a tableau of Noah's Ark during the ceremony of the blessing of the animals. Devoted animal owners walked alongside their livestock and pets in a way reminiscent of Easter processions as they awaited the refreshing holy water.
Today is the blessing of the animals here at Alvera Street. It's a tradition that's been part of Alvera Street since it opened in 1930 and it's a tradition that actually originated in the pueblo when this was all farmland and the priests would bless the livestock so that the farmers would have a prosperous year. And over time, it's transformed into this beautiful blessing where we bring our mascotas, our pets.
It's a great idea to do it because pets, they're like our kids too. And God always said God loves his little children and it includes pets too, right?
It's a tradition for us, for us Hispanics, I'm Mexican. So all of us in our family, we've all been baptized. And I think it's important, you know, for her to be blessed and to have the Lord with her.
Esta es una tradición católica que nosotros desde muy pequeño nos han inculcado nuestros padres y que siempre tenemos que bendecir a nuestros animalitos para que sean unos mejores animalitos y nosotros seamos unas mejores personas.
I'm here to bring Princess Nori to get blessed, since I don't have any kids.
You don't have to be Catholic or Christian to participate. Pets are beautiful parts of our life, they're animals that deserve to be blessed and cared for. And so regardless of your race, religion, creed or gender, you are welcome here with your furry or feathered loved one.
While still in the midst of tax season and in honor of Cesar Chavez, famous labor leader, the Pacoima City Hall held a free tax prep and financial health day. Neighbors benefited from professional tax help and other financial assistance all on the same day.
So today we are offering in honor of Cesar Chavez a financial literacy and tax prep day here at Pacoima City Hall.
We are going to be serving close to 100 families today that will be walking away with thousands of dollars in refunds. So we're just really excited to be able to be here to offer not just free tax preparation, but also financial literacy courses and then access to other programs.
We have tripled the amount of families in our community that are now getting free tax assistance. We are providing the resources that are helping people get into compliance, pay their taxes and have a worry-free lifestyle.
Me ofrecieron la oportunidad de hacer mis taxes gratuitamente y esa es una ayuda para mí. La verdad, no me esperaba que me atendieron muy bien, muy amablemente. Todas las preguntas que yo tenía yo me las contestaron y no me quedé con dudas. Yo recomiendo a todas las personas que busquen la ayuda de las personas que nos pueden ayudar y que confiamos en ellas principalmente y darles gracias por lo que están haciendo, por Pacoima.
The mission of the Community Investment for Families Department is to break the cycle of generational poverty through the creation of community wealth. And this event here, the Cesar Chavez Financial Health Day, is doing just that. It's breaking the cycle of poverty by creating opportunities for families to access these tax credits that they've earned. Oftentimes, families don't claim their tax return because they don't know how, they don't know where to go for resources, for information. We have families here who may be undocumented and we will help them file what we call an ITIN number, which allows for them to then claim their tax return and take advantage of credits, potentially for their children. There's a child tax credit and they're earning some tax credits. There's thousands of dollars that are left unclaimed annually and we want to make sure that we're putting this money back into the pockets of the families who have worked hard every day throughout the year to earn them and claim them.
You know, today is really about a reflection and service in the memory of Cesar Chavez, someone who fought so hard for each of us to be respected. And so to be able to provide this service here at a location that they trust, with their local government, my office is really proud to be able to offer this. There's a whole host of opportunities for us to give back and I'm just really privileged to be in a position to do that here today in the 7th District.
Check out what other events and resources are being offered by the Community Investment for Families Department at communityinvestment.lacity.gov. The Easter holiday was packed with egg spectacular events and we couldn't forget to lay out all the details of the Spring Egg Hunt Egg Extravaganza. This fun event for families and kids had all the ingredients to make it an excellent time for all involved.
This is the 2024 Trinity Recreation Extravaganza. We have bouncers, we have egg hunts, we have arts and crafts. We have a lot of stuff going on here for the community. It's fantastic to see all the kids smiling, laughing, having a great time with the activities here at Trinity.
There was a lot of kids and then they were very excited, looking for the egg. They were screaming, super excited. And I'm glad to see that because people, some of these days, kids don't get to do that.
The kids want to come out to events, parents are looking for activities. Trinity Recreation Center does great activities like this extravaganza.
So now I see that they're very proud and they make new friends and then they get to play around and then have fun.
She has so much fun, she loves it and we're going to come back next year. Just to make a kid smile, this means a lot to everybody in the community.
Que tenemos el busca de huevos y todos los eventos que tenemos de las rifas y todos los premios. Estamos aquí para la comunidad, Trinity Recreation Center. Y las sonrisas es el pago para todos los trabajadores que trabajan aquí.
For Women's History Month, we continue highlighting female professionals working for the city. This week, we take a look at the work of two engineers working at the LADWP and learn about the role models and the experiences that paved the road.
Currently at the Los Angeles Department of Water and Power, I am the Director of Water Engineering and Technical Services. This is an organization of over 400 engineers and technical professionals who plan, design and deliver water infrastructure projects for the city of Los Angeles and the 4 million people who live here. So currently I manage the transportation and building electrification teams and they're responsible for the EV charger rebate programs, any of our fleet EV charger infrastructure, as well as our EV service designed for any type of customers that want to install EV chargers. I wanted to join LADWP because at heart, I want to serve people, I want to help people. And being a public servant is one of the proudest moments of my life. Most of my family lives right here in the city of Los Angeles and the fact that the work that I do every day helps to deliver water to them is really important to me personally, but also to know that I can help the community at large makes a difference. So since I was a baby, my father has been my biggest cheerleader. He's the person, he's always been an engineer, he's always worked with women engineers and he always told me that I can be whatever I wanted to be. And at the time when I ever decide to go to college and finish, it will probably be about the time when Black women engineers would be needed the most. Growing up in El Salvador, my main role models were the strong women in my family. My grandmother's, Mama Lidia, Mama Lola and my mom, Rosario Cortez, who all really taught me that anything can be achieved with effort and with love. Before I became a supervisor, I actually participated in almost every career fair that I could. I wanted to make sure that I was the one standing in front of that table so people could see who I was and that anybody could be an engineer, whether you're African-American or a woman. And to be able to talk and speak about what my experiences were and what I saw coming up and give them the motivation on, you know, what's going on. That's what I kind of did to kind of make sure that, you know, people saw me and to motivate them and show them that, you know, you don't have to be male. Engineering is still very much a male-dominated field and really what I take is every single opportunity when I engage and interact with other women to let them know what I do and not be shy to share my experience, to share my story. Because people may not believe that they can go into a science or engineering career, but it's about representation. If you can see it, you can be it. And really it's about that for me and sharing and being able to hold the door open for everybody behind me.
In this week's feature story, our Maria Hall Brown sits down with LAPD Chief Dominic Choi. As the first Asian-American to hold this position, Chief Choi talks about its significance for all minorities and discusses some of the positions in the LAPD one wouldn't think exist. Let's hear the story.
Well, on March 1st, he made history as becoming the first Asian-American to hold the position of Chief of the Los Angeles Police Department. I am delighted to be joined today by the 58th Chief of the Los Angeles Police Department, the interim chief, Dominic Choi. So great to have you here.
Thanks for having me, Maria.
All right, what made you want to actually take on this role?
I think it just boils down to it's a, there was a need in the organization for somebody to fill that gap and I felt that I was the appropriate person to fill that gap. And so I agreed to put in my name in the hat for this process and I was honored and fortunate enough to be selected for it.
Do you have a clue as to how long you will be able to hold this position? What have you been told?
When anyone asks, I say roughly six months. So if it's less, it's less, if it's more, it's more. I know that the mayor and the commission would like to have a selection done as soon as possible, but you know, that all depends on how many applicants and the process that they're going to implement.
There's been an enormous amount of celebration, well deserved, for the fact that you're the first Asian-American to hold this position. So what do you think that says out loud and how does that make you feel?
Well, it makes me feel great to represent not just Korean-Americans or Asian-Americans, but all minority groups. I think people see me not as a Korean-American role model, but as a minority role model. I never dreamed I'd be sitting in this position. So I think with some hard work, some good luck and some dedication, anyone can work hard and achieve what they want to at LAPD.
So when you say that there's something for everybody in the LAPD, what are jobs beyond a beat cop, beyond someone who, you know, what are some of the things that people never even think about that they could potentially do?
We have a dive unit. If you're an avid scuba diver, you can go get on the dive unit to go search for evidence that's thrown in, you know, the ocean or the lakes or whatever else it may be. We have a mounted unit, we have specialized investigators like Abuse Child Unit. We, I mean, we have over 230 different job descriptions. We have our air support unit, you can become a pilot of a helicopter. On the civilian side, we have forensics, you know, our people that take our fingerprint specialists, our polygraph examiners, kind of the CSI stuff, all exists. We really do have a whole array of different jobs.
And most importantly, if people are interested in becoming part of your team, what's the best way for them to find out what's available?
Joinlapd.com. That webpage will give you everything you need to know. We have individual mentors for you to talk to and I encourage everyone to look at that website.
Well, thank you so much, Chief Choi. It was really nice talking with you. I look forward to talking to you again.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your time.
In this week's Things to Do, participate in an annual Lego shipbuilding contest, attend a teen civic engagement workshop and get paw prepared at a pet resource fair. All this up next on Things to Do.
Ready, set, Lego! The Los Angeles Maritime Museum will be Chaka Block on Saturday, April 13th, for the annual Lego Shipbuilding Contest. This is an awesome free event. All the Legos are supplied by the museum and the contest is divided into ages from 3 to 14 and over. Drop in at 10:00 a.m. It's free to enter both the museum and the contest. You can't bring in your own bricks, but all the Legos you'll need are on deck at the museum and you're sure to build a contest-worthy creation. All the Lego ships must be completed by 2:00 p.m. The annual Lego Shipbuilding Contest takes place on Saturday, April 13th at 10:00 a.m. For more information about the contest, visit lamaritaimuseum.org/events. Calling all teens to get involved. Join the Chinatown Teen Council and special guest Councilmember Unicece Hernandez at Los Angeles Public Library's Chinatown Branch for a civic engagement workshop. This is a day dedicated to civic engagement for teenagers. Attendees will learn how to empower themselves to make decisions that will create positive change in their community. Learn how to amplify your voice and get involved in developing local policies. Take an active part in Ellie's future at the Chinatown Teen Council's Civic Engagement Workshop, which takes place on Saturday, April 13th at 11:00 a.m. Learn more about this free workshop by visiting lapl.org/events. Councilwoman Monica Rodriguez invites you to a Pet Resource Fair on Saturday, April 13th at 10:00 a.m. Come to Orcas Park for an onsite petting zoo, kids' jumper and pet adoptions. The Pet Resource Fair is offering free microchipping to the first 100 pets on the day. There will be pet vaccinations onsite and in collaboration with El Pueblo, there will be a blessing of the animals at noon. The Pet Resource Fair is open to the public and your dogs, cats and horses are all welcome to this free event. Come out with your furry friends to the Pet Resource Fair at Orcas Park on Saturday, April 13th at 10:00 a.m. For more information, visit the website of Councilwoman Monica Rodriguez at cd7.lacity.gov/events. And that's a look at some things to do.
And that's all for this week. I'm Natalia Bilbao and from all of us here at L.A. This Week, thank you so much for joining us. Remember that you can watch us online anytime at lacityview.org and we're also on Instagram, Facebook, X and YouTube. See you next time for more L.A. This Week. See you next time for more LA This Week.
Good morning, everyone, and welcome to this meeting of your Los Angeles City Council. I'd like to bring this morning's meeting to order. Today is Friday, April 5th, 2024. I'm Paul Krikorian, President of the Council, and we're ready to begin. Public comment will be taken today both here in person in the John Farrow Council chambers and by teleconference. Madam Clerk, if you could please call the roll.
Bloomingfield, De Leon, Harris, Dawson, Hernandez, Hutt, Krikorian, Lee, McCosker, Padilla, Park, Price, Roman, Rodriguez, Soto, Martinez, Jarvislowski, ten members present in court, Mr. President.
Thank you. First order of business, please.
Approve the minutes of April 3rd, 2024.
Councilmember Hernandez moves. Councilmember Padilla seconds, next.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Councilmember Bloomingfield moves. Councilmember Park seconds, next.
Mr. President, there is a request to continue Item 13 to April 19, 2024, sir.
Very good. Without objection, that will be the order. What's next?
Items one through 12 are items which public hearings have been held. The committee report for Item 7 has been submitted and is available online under Council File 18-0244-S3. Items 13 through 16 are items which public hearings have not been held. Items 17 through 22 are closed session items considered by the Budget, Finance, and Innovation Committee. Item 23 is a closed session matter waived from the Public Works Committee. Ten votes are required for consideration.
Very good. Without objection, those items are now before us. Do any members have items that you would like to call special? Councilmember Hernandez?
Thank you, Council President. I'd like to call Item 16 special for a separate vote, please.
Very good. Thank you. Councilmember Bloomingfield?
Also 16, but for a very technical amendment, which is the date needs to reflect the current legislative session. So they have to change, but it's just changing it from 25 to 24.
Do we?
They have it.
Have that available now?
Yes, so--
Mr. City Attorney, if you could please read that in.
So the only change is going to be that the legislative session is, it was previously listed as 2024 to 2025, and the change is now going to list it as 2023 to 2024.
Very good. Thank you.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, sir.
All right. Councilmember Padilla?
Yes, numbers 11 and 12 for comments, please.
Very good. Any other specials members? Any specials on my right? Any specials on my left? Seeing none. Madam Clerk, what's available now for us to vote on?
Mr. President, council may now vote on Items 1 through 10, sir.
Okay, those items are now before us. I see no members wishing to be heard on those items, so let's go ahead and open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the votes.
Eleven ayes.
Very good. Madam Clerk, what's next before us?
Would council like to consider the closed session matters that were considered by Budget, Finance, and Innovation Committee?
I would like to turn to the Chair of the Budget, Finance, and Innovation Committee, Councilmember Bloomingfield, for his recommendations on those items. Thank you.
Right. For Items 17 through 22, we heard those in Budget Committee. I do not see the need for us to--
Excuse me. Sir, you'll need to be quiet and sit down. You'll need to sit down and be quiet. I've warned you. You're ordered removed from this meeting. Please leave the meeting immediately and silently. Please leave the room silently and immediately, right now. Right now. You're interrupting the meeting, sir, and you're not only disrupting, you are delaying the progress of this meeting. You'll need to leave, and I mean now. Rob Quan, you're ordered to sit and be silent and not disrupt this meeting. That's your only warning. Leave the meeting immediately. Leave the meeting immediately. I apologize, Mr. Bloomingfield, for the disruption and the delay of our work.
And just for the record, the gentleman who's still interrupting the meeting and refusing to leave is General Dogon.
He's doing that for the public.
All right. Mr. Bloomingfield, please start again.
I know you are hanging on by every word. I was merely saying that Items 17 through 22, we have heard in Budget Committee. We do not need to hear them here in open session unless any member has an issue with it. So I would move that we go with the Budget Committee's recommendations and hear these, approve them in open session.
Very good. Thank you. I see no members who wish to be heard on any of the closed session items, so we can go ahead and read those into the record.
Yes, sir. Item 17 in the case entitled Manual, Cifuentes versus City of Los Angeles et al., there's a recommendation to expend up to $150,000 in settlement. Item 18 in the case entitled Tova Siegel versus City of Los Angeles et al., there's a recommendation to expend up to $175,000 in settlement. Item 19 in the case of Young Nam Wilson versus City of Los Angeles, there's a recommendation to expend up to $250,000 in settlement. Item 20 in the case entitled Bizhan Mogum et al. versus City of Los Angeles, there's a recommendation to expend up to $350,000 in settlement. Item 21 in the case entitled Rosa Isabel Cruz versus City of Los Angeles, there's a recommendation to expend up to $650,000 in settlement. Item 22 in the case entitled American Home Assurance Company versus City of Los Angeles, and consolidated case entitled Marta Tomcu versus City of Los Angeles, there is a recommendation to expend up to $1,249,000 in settlement.
All right. Those items are now before us. I see no members wishing to be heard, so let's go ahead and open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the votes.
Twelve ayes.
All right, we're ready. Oh, Mr. Price?
Out of a minute of caution, I'm recusing myself from Item 24 due to the inability to clearly discern what organizations are involved in these projects from the documents presented.
Very good. Thank you. That will be on the special agenda, which we'll be calling momentarily, but duly noted. Thank you very much, Mr. Price. All right. With that, we're ready to begin the public comment portion of our meeting. So Madam Clerk, Mr. City Attorney, if you could please read in the instructions.
Yes, sir. As indicated on the agenda, members of the public wishing to offer public comment should call 669-254-5252 and use meeting ID number 1605358466, and then press pound. Press pound again when prompted for participant ID. Once admitted to the meeting, press star nine to request to speak. When it's your turn to speak in automated Zoom voice, we'll ask you to press star six to unmute. Again, call 669-254-5252 and use meeting ID number 1605358466, then press pound. Press pound again when prompted for participant ID. Once admitted to the meeting, press star nine to request to speak. When it's your turn to speak in automated Zoom voice, we'll ask you to press star six to unmute.
To people providing public comment, when it is your turn to speak, either at the podium or on the phone, please state which of the agenda items you would like to speak to. You will have one minute per item, up to three minutes total, for the items open for public comment. We will tell you when your time is up. When speaking on the agenda items, you must be on topic. Our goal is to get through as many speakers as we can. If you are not on topic, or if we cannot tell whether you are on topic, you will get one brief warning from me or the Council President. At that point, you need to get immediately and clearly on topic. If you do not do so, or if you again stray off topic, you will forfeit the rest of your speaking time, and we will move on to the next speaker. The items open for public comment are Items 14 through 16 and Item 23. So again, let me repeat. The items that are open for public comment during the regular meeting are Items 14 through 16 and Item Number 23. Members of the public may also speak for up to one minute for general public comment, which will be held together with the public comment on the agendas. During general public comment, members of the public may speak to any of the other items or anything else in the city's subject matter jurisdiction. For members of the public calling in, when it is your turn to speak, an automated message from Zoom will prompt you to press star six to unmute yourself. If you do not do so, council staff will prompt you once more. At that point, you need to immediately unmute yourself, or unfortunately, you will forfeit your speaking time, and we will have to move on to the next caller. Finally, because of a brief time delay between the meeting and the broadcast, the live meeting and the broadcast, two things are important. First, while waiting for your turn to speak, please keep an ear to the phone so you know in real time when it is your turn to press star six to unmute. Second, if you're listening to this meeting on another device, please turn down the volume on that device immediately when it is your turn to speak. Between the time delay and feedback, it will cause a great deal of confusion if you continue to listen on your other devices. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. I'm going to call out the names of the people who've signed up here in the chambers. As I call your name, please make your way to the left-hand, your left-hand side of the chambers so that you can be guided up to the podium. You don't need to speak in the order that I call you, but please don't line up until I do call you. Candido Mares, Eric Walter, Rob Quan, Jay Richardson, Taylor Francis, Andrew Grabner, Stacy Segarra-Bollinger, Andy, Spindler, and Dan. Good morning.
Good morning. If you could please remind us of the name you signed up under and the items you would like to speak to?
Eric Walter, general public comment.
Okay, so you have one minute.
I thank you for the opportunity. My name's Eric Walter. I'm a longtime customer of NoHo Printing, owned by Carlos Pena. Twenty months ago, his business was destroyed by the LAPD and the SWAT team and the US Marshal. The US Marshal gave him compensation opportunities to get compensated. It was denied. It was told it was the LAPD's fault. Later on, that was denied. It was appealed to City Attorney. It was denied. A judge ruled and denied it as well. There's no debate that the police acted in good faith. We have no quibbles with that. What we think and hope for is why does this have to be a legal matter? Cannot this be resolved in other ways? There must be funds from the LAPD, the US Marshal, and the City of LA to take care of this. He's an immigrant from El Salvador. He's living in the American dream, and now it's become an American nightmare. He can't provide for his family anymore. He has no opportunity for any other income. He has no opportunity for any other income, and I'd like to speak to someone else to follow up on a couple of details. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, sir. Sir, if you could just step over to the side, I'm going to have a staff member come and talk to you about that.
Thank you.
No, to the, yes, over to this side if you would. Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning. If you could please remind us of the name you signed up under and the items you would like to speak to?
Hello, Taylor Francis, general public comment.
Okay, so you have one minute.
Good morning, Council. I'm here to finish some comments I started on Wednesday, but a minute is not very much time. On Wednesday, I told you about my experience with the Building and Safety Commission where commissioners made a decision based on misleading and false information presented by staff. Neither I nor ownership disagrees with the outcome, but the process was highly suspect, calling into question many LADBS decisions. During that meeting, one commissioner said, "I am not very good at my job," and asked where I live. That was not professional and inappropriate and caused the fire under me to come here to speak to you today. That animosity displayed is displayed by many at LADBS. Multiple clients have said that staff is vindictive and hostile, and I have not spoken about anything because of worry about the reaction that I would face. My colleague also joined me Wednesday to prove an important point. The vast majority of people who work within the City of Los Angeles speak Spanish as their primary language, but Spanish services are not offered. Even in English, navigation is difficult. I asked Council to reaffirm the importance of a cooperative building environment. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good morning. Which items would you like to speak to?
Good morning. DanielGuss.substack.com, all items and general public comment.
Okay, so you have three minutes for the items and one minute for general public comment. Please begin with the items.
Great. Councilmembers, hello, how are you? For identification purposes only, I am not Daniel Gus, this orthopedic surgeon. I am Daniel Gus, the LA Press Club's Online Journalist of the Year.
I'm sorry. Mr. Gus, speak to the agenda, please.
I'm using my time to make sure there's no confusion...
You can say that on general public comment.
Mr. City Attorney, I have a right to identify myself, so there's no...
Yes, and you have identified yourself? You can continue this during general public comment if you'd like.
And I will re-identify myself. I will re-identify myself as I deem appropriate. Councilmembers, the REAP program is fantastic. The REAP program is what government should be. When there's a landlord who is taking advantage of individuals, this program holds them accountable until and unless they get their act together. I applaud every single one of the fifteen of you. Hugo, John, Kevin, Bob, all of you deserve praise for the rent escrow account program because it helps tenants against landlords who are not playing by the rules. So anybody on these various REAP items, anybody who thinks that I'm not willing to heap praise where it's due, should remember these comments. REAP is one of the best things this city does. Congratulations every time you do that. That's why I'm the LA Press Club's Online Journalist of the Year, because I call it like I see it. REAP works, and I'll always applaud it even if we disagree on other things. The same way, I could say that Mr. Price is actually one of the most likable guys on City Council on an interpersonal basis. REAP works. I will hand out praise whenever it's due, and I am Daniel Gus of DanielGuss.substack.com. In a minute, I'm going to move on to my general... Are we on to general yet, or we still have one minute left?
You still are on the items, but you can move to general if you'd like.
No, no, I don't want to move to general yet because you cut me off the other day. Item number twenty-three, councilmembers, I should reach out to Mr. Willet's attorney because a court was ordered to retrofit the City Hall press room, and you haven't done it. So if Mr. Willet's attorneys are here, they can reach out to DanielGuss.substack.com, or I may reach out to you because you have a wealth of failed accommodations that you were ordered to provide on the press room, and I suspect that it's because of my exposes about this corrupt government. And Mr. Willet's, congratulations on however this is resolved, but to his attorneys, reach out to me. Reach out to me because I've had a couple spinal surgeries, and the city was ordered to make retrofits to this building, and they haven't done it yet. If I don't hear from you, I may reach out to you. Hello to my friends at the smoke and scan as I go into my general public comment.
General public comment?
DanielGuss.substack.com. Councilmembers, can you tell me when PETA showed up here a couple of weeks ago, how come the LAPD didn't let them in for space even though there are photos of rows of empty seats? You are censoring individuals, you censored PETA, and that's why this is a corrupt government. Give people with a grievance the chance to come here and talk to you without keeping them out when you have empty seats. I'm telling you, you're going to get sued over the way Zoom lowers people's hands. I may be a lead plaintiff. You need to find out why Zoom is lowering hands. Because I have a story this week at DanielGuss.substack.com about Larry Gross, your Animal Services Commission President, losing a defamation suit, and now he's going to have to pay for the legal fees of one of your best animal services volunteers. And by the way, I have accused Katie Keppner of the Fire Department of making homicidal, suicidal threats. Where are you guys during Women's Month? Where are you, David Zahnizer?
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good morning, sir.
Good morning. Which items would you like to speak to?
All items and public comment, please.
Okay, so you have three minutes for the items and one minute for general public comment.
Thank you. Been here as many years as I've been, REAP sometimes works, sometimes it doesn't, but I think in the past few years, it's done a better job of serving the people. Item sixteen, boy, this is a big one for me. This is the street takeover issue. You know, I want to thank Councilman Lee, and now that you have your final year, sir, I can go after you on some stuff, but I'll always honor you. Yeah, you got us some extra money, and so every night, I usually patrol my neighborhood to make sure it's good, and all of a sudden, boy, the police are there, and they're taking care of these individuals who are speeding one after another, and as I pass by, I honk and wave at the officer. Thank you, sir, for doing that. Go down the road a little more, there they are. Thank you, sir, I appreciate that. You're saving lives. What happens next? I'm going home, and the officer pulls me over, throws on the lights, says, "Pull over." Hands on the wheel. Can I help you, sir? Goes, "Well, you're interfering with me." And I said, "What did I do?" He says, "Well, you honked at me." And I go, "Well, I appreciate what you're doing for me, sir. I've been doing this for many, many years, fifty years with Van Nuys and Devonshire." Hands on the wheel. He repeats that. Hands on the wheel. Okay, I'll put my hands on the wheel. So I said, "I apologize, and I'll never do that again."
You've exhausted your one minute on this item. Please move on to another item.
Okay, anyway, another cop goes by, he goes, "I gotta go now. You're taking me away from my job." So thank you for that extra patrolling. They're doing their job. What is it now, public comment?
If you'd like, or you can speak to any of the other items for...
I did REAP, I did REAP. I have to honor that woman over there, Ms. Hernandez. I tried to call on Tuesday, but whoever the crook is here that still works with Ms. Martinez denied me. You, my lady, I wish I had a rose so I could give you...
Bring it to an agenda item, please, Mr. Mars.
This is public comment.
Now, it wasn't, but now it can be if you'd like.
Thank you, sir.
So give Ms. full minute, please, for public comment.
I respect you, I'm not, you know, had...
Okay.
Anyway, ma'am, no, she deserves this, she deserves this. Second chance programs and what's happening. The Kardashians, the beautiful ladies, not only beautiful, but hearts are doing this. You, Ms. Hernandez, don't be afraid to look at me, you deserve it. You deserve the credit for that. All those individuals, when you watch them, most people weren't watching, but their faces, they lit up because they were given a second chance. Los Angeles is the city of second chance. You're looking at a man that was sent from Pueblo, Colorado, as a nineteen-year-old that was given a chance, and this city gave me that chance. That's why I hate Taggers and what they're doing to our city. So thank you for bringing forth, and I'm going to keep an eye on you. One day, I'm going to bring you a bouquet of roses because I don't want to see what happened to other politicians happen to you or anybody else. Look at the guy that played for the Dodgers, right? The speaker guy, I mean, he loses everything. For what? Don't let your heart be led a different way. You stay focused and true.
Thank you.
Your time has expired.
You're my angel in this council now, man.
Thank you, Candido. Next speaker, please.
Good morning. Which items would you like to speak to?
There's a lot of chatter right now, so I was wondering if the Chair could get ahold of the meeting.
So your time to speak on the agenda is now, Mr. Kwan, if you'd like to speak on the agenda.
I'd like to speak on all items and general public comment.
Okay, so you have three minutes for the items and one minute for general public comment. Please begin with the item.
I appreciate the Chair allowing all these disruptions. I hope that continues. And on these agenda items, I'd like to know, Groot, do you feel okay with a council member voting on these items if they haven't filled out their Form 700? Does that make you feel uneasy because you and I can't determine whether or not they have a conflict of interest? I'm just wondering because the due date for your Form 700s was on Tuesday, and yesterday I asked for them all, and one of our council members did not turn theirs in. So I'm feeling merciful, and I'm just going to say, if you get it in this afternoon, we'll forget about it. Otherwise, I might just try to pull all the Form 700s for all your senior staff and try to do an audit and see who else is fucking up. Your choice, your choice. I also just want to remind everybody for my general public comment, you know, before anybody gets grumpy...
Okay, general public comment?
It has been two hundred and fifty-three days that our Council President has failed to abide by his charter requirement to appoint someone to the Ethics Commission. That's there for good reason, Paul, to ensure that there's no horse trading, to ensure there's no politicization. Speaking of the rampant corruption that runs around this horseshoe, it has been one thousand five hundred and eighty-four days since this goddamn council did a single thing to address a single aspect of corruption in this city. Four members indicted since then. Look at the way Paul's tapping his hand down there. He really doesn't like it. Well, do something about it, bro. It's been a year and a half, over a year and a half, and you haven't brought up charter ethics reform. You think you hate me now? Give it a few weeks. I've got a lot of fun in store for you. Have a nice weekend. Maybe schedule ethics charter reform, and we can have a fun time.
Next speaker.
Good morning. Which items would you like to speak to?
All items and general comment.
Okay, so you have three minutes for the items and one minute for general public comment. Please begin.
All right, so fourteen, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen are all REAP items. It doesn't do a lot. It just basically, you know, does some, basically gets some REAP, but it doesn't really help unhouse people. It's just, it puts some money into a, into a bank and, you know, to pay for repairs that the landlord's refusing to do, and then does a, then puts a, then you go in and put it in the... But then it just all goes to the landlord, all the money, after that. And it's not helping them, you know, maybe if the building sends so much disrepair, they could waive rent for a while since clearly it's not up to the value that they're being charged for it. So yeah, let's see, we have item sixteen related from Blumentfeld and the indicted one over there, Price, for, for street takeovers. It's really doing the priorities right now. What's being passed out? The council members shouldn't be distracted with that right now. We have, so it's street takeovers, so no on that. Don't need money done towards that. I guess it's like some kind of, you know, motion, supporting some thing in the assembly, but let's not do that. All right, let's go on to general comment.
Okay, you have one minute.
We got Paul up there. You all seen, are you all okay with this guy running the meeting? You know, Paul is, you know, currently about to be under ethics investigation probably for his continuous rampant campaigning for Adrian Nazarian using his official position as Council President. He put out a press release, using his council office press release endorsing Adrian Nazarian for City Council. He's not taking it down, he's just, you know, and he's continuing. He brought Adrian Nazarian to the City Hall a couple of weeks ago. He keeps campaigning for Adrian Nazarian using his position as Council President, and all of you seem to be okay with that since we haven't seen, since he still refuses to resign. We haven't seen the motion to remove him yet. Where is that? You all apparently are okay with this guy running the meeting for some reason and continuing to be Council President. KDL needs to resign.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. And as our next speaker is coming forward, as our next speaker is coming forward, I'd like to call out a couple of other names. Somebody who signed up as Ms. Karen, as well as Rickondall W. And those are the only people that I have who have signed up here in the chambers. Ms. Richardson, good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, general public comment.
Okay, so you have one minute. Please begin.
Since about twenty years ago or more, jobs for black men have eroded. Oh, one of the reasons may be this situation. This Mexican man asks this black man, "Why are you messing with my girl?" Said, "Messing with your girl? She came after me, I didn't go after her." Since that time, black jobs have eroded. They don't want us working with them because we're angry. We are so angry. They say, "We're so angry, working with one of us is like working with a battleship, and they don't want to touch any of us." One problem may be because we don't have enough, eat enough food. That may be a problem. Another problem may be because, because we don't have enough food. We don't, instead of doing the whole job, we do half of the job. These, the jobs are not available to us because of race relationships. We don't leave the women alone and because we're angry.
Thank you very much. Thank you, have a good day. Next speaker, please.
Good morning. Which items would you like to speak to?
Thank you, mister. Can I have all items, please?
So you have three minutes for the items.
Thank you. And also, public comment, start with item number thirteen.
So item number thirteen has been continued, so it's not open for public comment, but there are other REAP items.
Okay, let's go to number fourteen then.
Okay.
Start with fourteen, with LAHD. So now, let's move on to number twenty-three. It is about the American with Disability Act, and it is about the sidewalk. I really have a concern about the American with Disability Act because in several different, I don't know if it's a Los Angeles public property or is that a private property, in several instances that I want to use the elevator, but the elevator is not there. In several instances that where I want to use the elevator, but the elevator is out of service. So I do believe there's a huge violation of American with Disability Act in the City of LA, not only in City of LA, but in certain, the bus stop, metro bus stop within the City of LA. And then there are certain instances that when the LAPDOT bus running inside of City of LA where their ramp is not working, they have to pass up on the wheelchair. So that is a huge violation of the American with Disability Act. I'm very concerned about that. Now, let's move on to number sixteen, which is my favorite, the street takeover. So the number sixteen is, well, it is really, I'm not surprised with this criminal street takeover because there's no consequence. So right now, it doesn't matter if it's a street takeover or it's a looting, rioting, raping, killing, whatever kind of criminal activity, there's no consequence, very little consequence. So that's the reason why that those street takeover will occur over and over again. Now, we lost one thousand three hundred LAPD officer. If we have those one thousand three hundred LAPD officer, we can put them in every street of the corner inside of City of LA, and if we have more LAPD in the major intersection of the LAPD, I guarantee you, there will be no more street takeover if we see LAPD right there. Now, let's move on to public comment.
General public comment?
So right now, we are talking about street takeover. We're going to the Figueroa Street. I see those prostitute takeover. When I see the shopping mall, I see the looter takeover. When I see the, you know, on the airport... Uh, when I see the, you know, on the airport, I see those illegal protest takeover. So, right now, and then in the city hall right here, I see the corruption takeover. And then when I see my council member Hernandez, I see the overweight takeover. So, right now, what, right now, everything, everything, everything I see right here is a, is a takeover. And then, we are talking about systemic racism. Why LAPD are not enforce the law when the suspect is black? Why, when LAPD is a, uh, is afraid to enforce the law? Why, instead of handcuff the criminal, why we handcuff the LAPD? So, instead of protecting the citizen, why we are giving second chance to the criminal? Because I know the victim will never have a second chance, but right now, we are giving third chance to the criminal.
Speaker, your time has expired.
Next speaker, please.
Good morning. So you have three minutes for the items and one minute for general public comment. Please begin with the items.
Yes, thank you. Uh, is it Buckethead?
Pumpkinhead. Speak to the agenda item or go to general public comment.
I'm trying. Jesus. Number fucking fourteen, CD fucking thirteen. See what I have to fucking do to fucking talk, Hugo, on this fucking item on fucking West fucking Bellevue fucking Avenue? Fucking ID number five, fucking four, fucking zero, fucking one, fucking dash, fucking zero, fucking two, fucking two, dash, fucking zero, fucking one, fucking six. Fucking approve the fucking LHD, fucking recommendation, fucking dated, fucking March, fucking twenty-seven, fucking twenty-twenty, fucking four. I'll play your fucking game. So, we're just here to say a good job. That's what the puppet wanted to say. Go ahead. You're doing a good job on this item, Hugo. Now clean up the encampment underneath the funnel on freeway next to it. Then we get to number fifteen. That's right, the person who looks like Dave Chappelle on number fifteen, if he had a real head of hair, that is. And thank you to Harris Marquisi Dawson dildo for getting rid of this program on West Twenty-second Street, a certified shithole. Kevin one time tried to go down there, but he had nowhere to park. Not because there were not parking spaces, but because if he parked, he'd lose all the rims on his car. It's a real shithole down there. Aren't you glad the rest of you don't have to represent that fucking shithole? I think you should pay people to live on that street. I wouldn't live there, and I'm sure Pumpkinhead would never go down there if he had to serve papers. Jesus, what a fucking shithole on that item. And then we get to the street takeovers. Rum, rum, it's time for Dodger baseball on the streets. Yes, as we do wheelies. This is what Unicef calls social interaction. She likes it when people get together and modify their mufflers on their cars and do donuts. This is what young people do, and then they go on the internet and they post it. And then John Lee calls the police and they say, "Fuck you staffer B, you're going to prison." I'm not gonna go up there and start that takeover. But how come Kevin calls the police and they go to his district and stop the ta, street takeovers on the Sixth Street Bridge? How come? Because they know he's dangerous. Yes, he's dangerous, yes. And how about the rest of you? When are you gonna start your takeovers, Amelda, over there on Burbank Boulevard in Woodley? You're not doing anything about it. And then we get to today's comment. Yes, Tracy Park has brought another ugly jacket into these chambers. Let's give her a hand. It's important because Katie Yaroslavsky was leading the race on the most ugliest jackets by council members. Now, Park is ahead by one. That's why she walked out in shame. Jesus Christ, that ugly red jacket with that pretty black outfit? Yesterday, an ugly green jacket with a black outfit? Do any of you have any fashion sense? How about, Amelda, give her some fashion sense, Jesus Christ. And then, of course, we have the elections going on, and then we have a scandal by Buckethead. Pot McCosker, did you know he has a house in his district filled with trash and he doesn't do a goddamn fucking thing about it? Shame on Buckethead. Oh, here's Tracy back here. Get rid of that jacket, Tracy. Donate it to the ninety-nine cent store.
Next speaker, please.
My name is Rick.
And which items would you like to speak to?
Uh, I would like to talk about Proposition One and someone who I have on videotape. His name is Kevin Dullion. With Proposition One, they came to a building and discussed me. How can it be in a hour video and you got ten minutes of me? And Mr. Kevin Dullion and the chief that was there, the public should know what's going on. This is a secret meeting. I got it on video, how they were talking about me and also downtown Skid Row. Y'all can't see it yet, but there's some people that want to see it. Mr. Kevin Dullion, I asked him one day, when I saw him, I wanna talk to him about Proposition One. He told me, "I don't stay here. I'm not Kevin Dullion." And here it is, there's other people like the sanitation department, and Mr. Kevin Dullion is the one that's behind it. He sent people to clean up two streets on Winston and San Pedro. Nobody else could get done, uh, double like that. I have no avenue to go to him. If you did, say, Fifth Street and San Pedro at, at the same time, you have chaos. Mr. Kevin Dullion is trying to get votes to get back in.
Speaker, your time has expired.
Thank, thank you very much. We'll go next to our callers on the phone. Let's go ahead and take the first caller, please.
First caller, which items would you like to speak on?
All items, please, and general public comment.
Okay, so you have three minutes for the items and one minute for general public comment. Please begin with the items.
Okay. Alright, excellent. Um, so, we have, start off the rent escrow account program item, AKA REAP. Now, I'm just curious why Daniel Guss thinks this is so successful and how it's actually holding landlords accountable? Because while the landlord can't touch rent money until they've made certain abatement, uh, the tenants whose rights have been violated and whose lease contracts are not being upheld, they still have to pay their full amount of rent, and they never see any rest of tuition. All they get is problem six that they should have never had to deal with in the first place. Um, so, Daniel Guss, I, I appreciate a lot of what you do, um, but I'm not with you on this one because how is the landlord being held accountable when they just get their money at the end of the day anyway? I've never had a job where I could fail my end, not do my work, but then just still get everything I was owed if I, um, recoup the things I made mistakes on in whatever amount of time. That's not really how the world works, um, for like working folks like me or for, um, tenants. Um, so it just doesn't make sense because typically when someone violates a contract, it breaks the contract, and then the other party in the contract isn't obligated to uphold their end. Um, but when it comes to the owning class, the corporations, to landlords, then, um, there's really no rules. It's just, um, a, a little stern talking to from their buddies, uh, in the government. And then, you know, they're just told, "Hey, um, okay, what, now, you put it back, put it back." "Okay, now here's your money after you put it back." We treat landlords and bosses and CEOs like, like they're toddlers, like, um, you know, like one, two, three, and then, then it's timeout. And after your timeout, then you can have the ice cream. We can't keep doing this. We need to say, if a landlord's not gonna uphold their end of the deal...
So, caller, you've used your two minutes on the REAP items. Please move on to another item.
I thought there was three REAP items, Groot.
So, as announced earlier in the meeting, item number thirteen has been continued and is not open for public comment. You're welcome to continue during general if you'd like.
Okay, great. So then let's talk on sixteen then. Um, I think, I don't think it is fair to punish by standards regarding street takeovers. Um, I, I don't like cars. I'm a anti-motorist as they come, and you're not gonna find me being very sympathetic to people drag racing. But that's, um, I don't know, I just think that our city can do better, more important things with our resources and focus on getting pedestrian infrastructure and street lights and things like that, making the roads safer for people. Um, I don't know if these tactics are really helping. Um, so, with that...
General public comment.
Working for the city of Los Angeles is interesting. The council body claims to care, but they fail to do anything to help the people speak during meetings. But Groot says their goal is to hear as many they can, but they've been lowering the caller's hands, correcting these violations isn't even in their plan. Then if Ya tells us, everything is grand. We're so lost when I look, you're not listening. Heaven resign. Nethia Roman's a grift, you're always lying. Nethia, she lies. It's so wrong when we speak, you're not listening. All should resign. Heaven resign. Nethia resign. All you fuckers resign. Shout out Smokin' Scan, love you.
Okay, thank you, Cindy Lopper. Next one.
Next caller.
Next caller, which items would you like to speak on?
Morning nerds and virgins, Brock Lander, Los Angeles Private Investigator.
Which items would you like to speak to? So, you have three minutes for the items and one minute for general public comment. Please begin with the items.
Alright, the street takeovers, uh, the Great Panderer, getting pulled over for honking your horn is a violation of your First Amendment right. Watch the stalking of Ms. Hernandez, it's getting a little creepy. It's one of the reasons that Damon at Smokin' Scan took away your name fifty guns and changed it to the Great Panderer. Uh, REAP, I don't know a lot about REAP. I'm not as educated on it as I should be. I do know if award-winning journalist Daniel Guss at danielguss.substack.com is for it, I think that's a good indication. I don't know how the sen, the, uh, surgeon Daniel Guss feels about it, but since we're not talking about removing the stick from Paul or, uh, Bob's ass, I don't think it matters what a surgeon thinks. I'm basing my opinion on what Daniel Guss at danielguss.substack.com thinks. Uh, no offense, Stacy, we love you. Uh, general public comment.
Okay, you have one minute.
Uh, I learned something, or figured something out after the last meeting. Um, I find it amusing that you guys always say pu, public comment is satisfied. And you don't seem to understand why the public gets upset and they feel that it's not satisfied. You guys seem confused by that. And then it hit me. It's been so long since you, any of you has satisfied anybody, you're confused about what it means. So, maybe if you guys try harder in some other aspects of your life, you'll understand why the, uh, all the people here are, uh, not satisfied with what you think is decent. So, uh, everybody have a, uh, good, safe weekend, and another shout out to, uh, Stinks and Damon and Smokin' Scans, and, uh, get in here, Jason.
Next caller.
Next caller, which items would you like to speak on? Caller with the last four digits, four, six, one, zero, please go ahead.
Uh, alright, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Which items would you like to speak to?
Um, I heard there were some changes. Can you tell me what items are available, please, and also all available, I'm sorry, a general public comment?
So, the items that are open for public comment are fourteen through sixteen and item twenty-three. So, you have three minutes for those items and one minute for general public comment. Please begin with the items.
Alright, thank you very much. Uh, item fourteen is a REAP item. Uh, REAP is another R word. Another R word I like to describe REAP is retarded. Um, it's retarded the social contract to into oblivion. When someone doesn't uphold their end of a contract, it's broken. And usually that contract lists enforcement measures to hold both parties accountable should they violate their end of the contract. Now, when your landlord paints over power outlets and door hinges and makes windows unusable and makes the entire molding on the floor not even attached to the floor, allowing bugs all up in the apartment, you're not allowed to pay less rent. When the laundry machine stops working and they raise the price on laundry despite it being dilapidated and not working, you're not allowed to pay less rent. You're not allowed to withhold your rent. But for whatever reason, if there's a hole above your bed and shit falling through, they can just take the money that you would have paid them, put it in a cute little box, and then when the landlord gets around to it, they get the money back. That's not an enforcement of a contract. Um, item number, uh, sixteen, further street takeover criminalizing. Um, I think it's interesting how there's no effort to take care of anything in this city until somebody makes the city look bad and points at it and gets enough attention on it. How, how many streets have had street takeovers in neighborhoods that none of y'all give a fuck about? But the moment it starts to look bad in the area where, you know, somebody with money or wears a suit has to look at it, all of a sudden laws have to be made. How long did that Ocean View, whatever the fuck apartment building, sit there years, forty stories, uh, abandoned with graffiti before someone pointed at it during an award show for it to get, for it to even get any attention? The same thing with these street takeovers. It's such bullshit. Um, nobody, nobody, nobody fucking cares. It's all just to make it look like you're doing something for the city while it falls apart. And the street takeovers, it's bad when somebody gets hurt. But really, what's the big deal? Well, it makes a lot of noise. Okay, no one cares about the police.
Speaker, you've exhausted your one minute on this item. You're welcome to continue on, on general, but please move on to another item for now.
Got you. Alright, that's, uh, another REAP, item fifteen. Um, I wonder if I, if I went into city, city hall, went behind the horseshoe and stole Paul Corian's laptop with all God knows what's on it? I wonder if they would, how would that work? Do I get to just give it back later, or am I gonna face some kind of penalty? Are the police gonna fucking beat the shit out of me in front of everybody? Throw me in a cell, hold me for days, and I'll have to face the judge? Or will I get to just give it back? Uh, general public comment. Uh, yo, Maga Karen, listen, man, you like to say black this, black that, let me talk to you in a language you understand. Chinaman, please stop demanding that we give up our rights. You are fucking bugging. You love talking all this praise about Texas and other states. You know what they're allowed to have? Their Second Amendment rights. Stop demanding they take away our rights and further police us and start demanding that we get our gun rights back. This generation and their fucking phones. If you look at city council, uh, city hall, you can see all the police up in there on their phones. I've been there in person. It's a disgrace. It's a disgrace to fascism, democracy, any semblance of a government order. Uh, what we need to do is stage sit-ins, and small businesses getting evicted, and then maybe they can help us afterwards with our actions and protests. We need to unite with the small businesses and start taking over this city by force. Because power gives up nothing without demand, and it sure as fuck's not giving up anything without a struggle. Uh, that being said, LA Valley Gun Club is looking for members.
Next caller.
Next caller, which items would you like to speak on? Caller with the la-
Yes, we can hear you. Which items would you like to speak to?
Uh, general comment.
Okay, so you have one minute for general public comment. Please begin.
Hi, my name is Brian Kowalczak, and I'm a handicapped seventy-year-old senior, and good morning, Mr. Corian. The hundred-and-twenty-day city council ordinance, one-eight-eight-one-oh-nine, that expires at the end of May, gives us ULAE rapper-approved tenants some breathing room, but landlords who haven't yet participated like mine can still file a nonlawful detainer for the COVID background on June first, which means I would be at the mercy of a judge regardless if I'm represented by an attorney or how many affirmative defenses I may have, and I could end up homeless. So, I would appreciate if city council could perhaps pass an emergency version of the state's UD-125 document, application to prevent forfeiture due to COVID-19 rental debt. The landlord previously served me three-day notices at the beginning of February, but I believe that ord, the one-eight-eight-one-oh-nine ordinance made them reconsider filing the unlawful detainer notice. But I believe that my landlord has decided to wait for that one-eight-eight-one-oh-nine to expire before they start re-signing again.
Next caller.
Next caller, which items would you like to speak on?
So, the speaker, before we take the next caller, the speaker in the, uh, gray winter coat who appears to be moving towards the back of the council chambers, please do not disrupt this meeting. This is your first and only formal warning. Sorry, caller, go ahead. Which items would you like to speak to?
Hi, uh, good morning. Um, I'd like to speak on, uh, which items of street takeover? Is that number sixteen?
Yes, so, are there any other items that you'd like to speak to?
And, 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 uh, general public comment, please.
Okay, so you have one minute for the item and one minute for general public comment. Please begin.
Okay, okay, let me know when I'm in general public comment. Okay, good, uh, good afternoon, city council members. So yes, I do support, um, this item. Um, there needs to be more be done to, um, uh, address the street takeovers. My suggestion would be is to, um, give these, uh, the, the car enthusiasts who were involved in the street takeovers, uh, find them, find them a location where they can, um, they can go to an area where they can, um, do their, um, stunts, um, uh, driving wherever, in a location where it's designated for that. And I'm pretty sure there are plenty of locations for that. Second thing is install cameras at every intersection, uh, where there is traffic light, so that way you guys can know, um, um, when there's a street takeover happening, at least you can have the police response, uh, right away. And that's basically, um, a good idea that we need to, yes, okay, general public comment. Um, on Tuesday and Wednesday, I've been on this phone trying to get through, uh, to you guys to make public comment. I haven't been able to get through. And the problem that I have, uh, with this city council is that, um, you guys think that concludes public comment while I was waiting on the phone to speak and I don't get my turn. And I just want you to guys to stop filing the Brown Act. Because this is happening over and over and over and you have, uh, a, a city with, um, over, uh, four million people, um, who want to make public comment can't. So my suggestion is stop filing the Brown Act or else your city's gonna continue to get sued for violating the Brown Act because you're not letting everybody speak. Please let people speak. I mean, this is ridiculous. I had to call in and, and, and wait, um, just to get through. Finally, I was able to get through today and I don't, and I love this city so much. I would love to come and make public comment every time you guys have a city council meeting, an item, but it's just not right.
Caller, your time has expired. And I didn't want to interrupt the last caller, but whoever booed in the middle of the public comment, please do not do so. I believe it came from the right side of the council chambers. Uh, I need to be able to hear the people who are speaking on the phones. Next caller?
Next caller, which items would you like to speak on?
Uh, general public comment please.
Okay, so you have one minute. Please begin.
Good morning, council members, Paul Corian, Lionel Morris, Sun Valley Area Neighborhood Council speaking as an individual. Mr. Corian, I'm kinda disappointed that at the last minute you didn't show up at our meeting for meeting greet on Thursday. Um, very disappointed on that. Um, number two, please, please consider agendizing, reviving the Ad Hoc Committee on Governance Reform, Charter Reform, uh, cause we're, we really want to get this, um, done as soon as possible. Mr. Corian, you have the authority to do so, so please, please listen to our calls. Um, number three, the neighborhood council system is still broken and I hope that the next general manager will help fix the issues that we are experiencing. Um, because we're getting mixed messages from the NEAs, the Neighborhood Apartment Advocates and the City Attorney Advice Division, and we're, we're getting mixed messages about, and things like SB four eleven and teleconference. So, and number four, please bring back teleconference, public comment meeting.
Caller, your time has expired.
No more callers in the queue.
Thank you very much. That will close public comment on all agenda items and close general public comment. So with that, Madam Clerk, uh, what is available for us now to vote on?
Uh, Ms. President, uh, items, uh, fourteen and fifteen can be voted on now, sir?
Very good. Uh, item fourteen and fifteen are before us. I see no members wishing to be heard, so let's go ahead and open the roll. Close the roll and, oh, hold on one second. Okay, items fourteen and fifteen are before us. Again, let's open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the votes.
Twelve ayes.
Thank you. Item sixteen is now before us and there was a substitute motion on item sixteen that was distributed. So members, we have two votes. The first vote is on the motion to substitute and then we'll vote on the substituted motion if that passes. So the first vote is on whether to substitute on that item. If there's no member wishing to be heard, let's open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the votes.
Twelve ayes.
Thank you. The substitute motion on item sixteen is now before us. On the substance of that motion, if there's no member wishing to be heard on item sixteen, the substitute motion, let's open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the votes.
Ten ayes, two noes.
Thank you. That will take us next to item number eleven, which was called special by council member Padilla. Council member Padilla, would you like to be heard on item number eleven?
Yes. Thank you so much. Well, in regards to the proposed contracts, I recognize that the approval of these budgets is necessary and common practice to maintain the uninterrupted functions of our airports. However, these are sizable contracts and I think the city must be cognizant on the monetary expenditures of our airports and ensure that the outcomes are result-driven, which is the best interest of the city, the airports, and our residents. I encourage Lawa to work with CD six and related districts in respect to Van Nuys Airport contracts, guidelines, and policy. One of these contracts is proposed to include ultimate, uh, guidelines through a task order for the landscaping of Van Nuys Airport. Landscape guidelines will also be addressed through my motion twenty-three dash thirteen thirty-nine in the development of a new Van Nuys Airport-specific plan. Landscaping plays an important role in the mitigation of pollution and in beautifying CD six for both airport users and the surrounding communities. As someone who grew up with the love of gardening and landscaping, thanks to my father who was a gardener, sustainable landscape is an important component of environmental management. Therefore, I look forward to Lawa collaborating with my office in consideration of native selection and more greenery to mitigate pollution generated by its operations and just its general aesthetics. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Padilla. Now you had also called item twelve special for comments, so could we take those items up together?
That was for both.
And we could take them up to vote together then? So, uh, if there's no other member wishing to be heard on item eleven and twelve, let's go ahead and open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the votes.
Twelve ayes.
Mister President, there's a request to send eleven and twelve forthwith, sir?
Without objection, that will be the order. Alright, Madam Clerk, uh, are there any other items on the general, uh, on the regular meeting agenda that we can take up now other than the closed session item?
Uh, no sir. It's only closed second item three left.
Alright, uh, then we will proceed now into the closed session portion of our meeting. So, um, to the members of the public who are here in the audience, um, I'd like to ask you to step out so we can begin with the closed session part of our meeting.
Department of Public Health and the City of LA's Department of Aging remind you that getting vaccinated and boosted is the best way to protect yourself and your community.
And it's especially important for those at higher risk of severe diseases such as older adults and individuals who are immunocompromised or have chronic conditions.
For COVID nineteen vaccination appointments or to request in-home vaccination if you or a loved one have difficulty leaving the home, please call two one one or the Los Angeles County Department of Public Health Vaccine Call Center at eight three three five four zero zero four seven three. Open daily, eight AM to eight thirty PM.
Remember, vaccines are free and immigration status and insurance are not required.
Visit vaccinateLacounty.com for more information about how to get vaccinated.
And visit aging.lacity.org or call two one three four eight two seven two five two for information on senior services.
California Attorney General Rob Bonta has announced more than twenty-seven felony charges against three suspects involved in organized retail crime. Retailers of high-end designer goods were targeted, resulting in losses of over three hundred thousand dollars in smash and grab and flash mob robberies. Los Angeles Police Department, LAPD, Organized Retail Crime Task Force, ORCTF, found the suspects had operated across six counties in California. The suspects were found to be selling stolen merchandise online through social media and were also in possession of a handgun. For more information, visit the Office of the Attorney General at OAG.ca.gov. Los Angeles International Airport, LAX, has some travel tips to help make your spring break travel experience safe and enjoyable. Arrive at least two hours before your scheduled departure. This allows time to check in, check your bags, proceed through TSA security, and get to your gate. If traveling internationally, LAX recommends arriving at least three hours before your departure time. Pre-book your parking. Facilities can reach capacity quickly during high travel months, but you can plan and book your parking ahead of time. LAX is undergoing multi-billion dollar construction improvements, so you are reminded to plan for possible delays. For more travel tips, visit flylax.com. At a recent fire commission meeting, the Los Angeles Fire Department, LAFD, honored the first black female firefighter on the force. Having served in the US Army as an intelligence specialist, Delisa Davies joined the LAFD in nineteen eighty-four and worked in fire stations throughout the city. Davies worked on prioritizing women and minority recruits to the fire department, and in two thousand nine, she was promoted to captain. Although Davies retired in two thousand fifteen, she has continued to mentor and encourage firefighters at every stage of their career. For more information, visit lafd.org.
Over four thousand choking-related deaths occur each year, with the very young and the elderly being the most at-risk groups. The key to helping someone survive a choking incident is being able to immediately recognize the signs they are in trouble. These are the most common signs someone is choking. One or both of their hands clutched to the throat. Look of panic, shock, or confusion. Inability to talk or cough. Color changing to blue or gray. If the person can cough forcefully, encourage them to keep coughing. If the person cannot cough or talk, you need to quickly take action and perform abdominal thrusts. For an adult, stand behind the person with one foot slightly in front of the other for balance. Wrap your arms around the waist and tip the person forward slightly. Make a fist and put it just above the person's navel. Grasp your fist with your other hand and press it into their stomach with a quick upward thrust, as if you're trying to lift the person up. Give five abdominal thrust, then check if the blockage is cleared. If it is not clear, repeat as needed. If the person is pregnant or you cannot get your arms around their stomach, give chest thrust instead. Put your hands at the base of the breastbone, press hard into the chest with a quick thrust. Perform five thrust and check if the blockage is cleared. If the person becomes unconscious, you will need to begin CPR and contact nine one one.
Your Los Angeles City Council?
Here's what's happening in LA this week.
This is LA Current.
I call on our city to not just dream of the LA we want, but to participate in making- I call on our city to not just dream of the LA we want, but to participate in making the dream come true.
This is not a situation where someone's going in and shoplifting. We're talking about the potential for a level of violence that is very, very dangerous for the community, and we are not going to tolerate that in the City of Los Angeles.
Los Angeles Public Library's annual Maker Fair is on, and you're invited. They call it the greatest show and tell on earth. Prepare to be inspired. Maker Fair and City of STEM looks to the future and gathers engineers, artists, scientists, and crafters together to showcase their projects. Exhibitors include museums, NASA, and tech companies, and they will have activities, workshops, and one-of-a-kind experiences for all ages to enjoy. Los Angeles Public Library Maker Fair and City of STEM is free to attend. Reserve your spot on Eventbrite. Head to the Los Angeles State Historic Park for the Los Angeles Maker Fair and City of STEM, happening on Saturday, April 6th, beginning at 9:00 a.m. For more information, visit los angeles.makelfair.com. LA's Department of Cultural Affairs, DCA, invites you to take part in the Big Read 2024. On Sunday, April 7th, enjoy a reading and discussion circle on this year's Big Read book, Can We Talk About Something More Pleasant: A Memoir by Roz Chast. Rife with laughter and tears, Can We Talk About Something More Pleasant: A Memoir is a New York Times Bestseller and a National Cartoonist Society winner. Chast's memoir provides comic relief for anyone experiencing the loss of elderly parents. The reading and discussion circle is free and open to the public, with a free copy of the book provided, along with free coffee and tea. The Big Read 2024 Reading Circle takes place in Herman Park on Sunday, April 7th, at 10:00 a.m. To find out more and to let them know you'll attend, go to artintheparkla.org/events. Springtime means spring cleaning, and that goes double for the beach. Join Cabrillo Marine Aquarium educators and volunteers for their monthly beach cleanup, clearing the shore of marine debris. April's beach cleanup takes place on Saturday, April 6th, at 9:00 a.m. The monthly beach cleanups are a great way to help out while enjoying the outdoors and learning about the marine environment. The beach cleanup is free and open to the public. Children must be accompanied by an adult. Volunteers meet at the steps in front of the John Olgin Auditorium. That's beach cleanup at the Cabrillo Marine Aquarium on Saturday, April 6th, at 9:00 a.m. To find out more, visit cabrillomarinaquarium.org/events. And that's a look at some things to do.
Every day, over 100 Americans die from secondhand smoke. Secondhand smoke in children can cause asthma, ear infections, and increased risk of sudden infant death syndrome. Go to smokefreehomesla.com. Learn how you can protect your home from secondhand smoke.
Department of Public Health and the City of LA's Department of Aging remind you that getting vaccinated and boosted is the best way to protect yourself and your community.
And it's especially important for those at higher risk of severe diseases such as older adults and individuals who are immunocompromised or have chronic conditions.
For COVID-19 vaccination appointments or to request in-home vaccination if you or a loved one have difficulty leaving the home, please call 211 or the Los Angeles County Department of Public Health Vaccine Call Center at 833-540-0473, open daily 8:00 a.m. to 8:30 p.m.
Remember, vaccines are free and immigration status and insurance are not required.
Visit vaccinateLacounty.com for more information about how to get vaccinated.
And visit aging.lacity.org or call 213-482-7252 for information on senior services.
California Attorney General Rob Bonta has announced more than 27 felony charges against three suspects involved in organized retail crime. Retailers of high-end designer goods were targeted, resulting in losses of over $300,000 in smash-and-grab and flash mob robberies. Los Angeles Police Department, LAPD, Organized Retail Crime Task Force, ORCTF, found the suspects had operated across six counties in California. The suspects were found to be selling stolen merchandise online through social media and were also in possession of a handgun. For more information, visit the Office of the Attorney General at oag.ca.gov. Los Angeles International Airport, LAX, has some travel tips to help make your spring break travel experience safe and enjoyable. Arrive at least two hours before your scheduled departure. This allows time to check in, check your bags, proceed through TSA security, and get to your gate. If traveling internationally, LAX recommends arriving at least three hours before your departure time. Pre-book your parking. Facilities can reach capacity quickly during high travel months, but you can plan and book your parking ahead of time. LAX is undergoing multi-billion dollar construction improvements, so you are reminded to plan for possible delays. For more travel tips, visit flylax.com. At a recent Fire Commission meeting, the Los Angeles Fire Department, LAFD, honored the first black female firefighter on the force. Having served in the U.S. Army as an intelligence specialist, Delisa Davies joined the LAFD in 1984 and worked in fire stations throughout the city. Davies worked on prioritizing women and minority recruits to the fire department, and in 2009, she was promoted to captain. Although Davies retired in 2015, she has continued to mentor and encourage firefighters at every stage of their career. For more information, visit lafd.org.
Over 4,000 choking-related deaths occur each year, with the very young and the elderly being the most at-risk groups. The key to helping someone survive a choking incident is being able to immediately recognize the signs they are in trouble. These are the most common signs These are the most common signs someone is choking: One or both of their hands clutched to the throat. Look of panic, shock, or confusion. Inability to talk or cough. Color changing to blue or gray. If the person can cough forcefully, encourage them to keep coughing. If the person cannot cough or talk, you need to quickly take action and perform abdominal thrusts. For an adult, stand behind the person with one foot slightly in front of the other for balance. Wrap your arms around the waist and tip the person forward slightly. Make a fist and put it just above the person's navel. Grasp your fist with your other hand and press it into their stomach with a quick upward thrust, as if you're trying to lift the person up. Give five abdominal thrusts, then check if the blockage is cleared. If it is not clear, repeat as needed. If the person is pregnant or you cannot get your arms around their stomach, give chest thrust instead. Put your hands at the base of the breastbone. Press hard into the chest with a quick thrust. Perform five thrusts and check if the blockage is cleared. If the person becomes unconscious, you will need to begin CPR and contact 911.
Your Los Angeles City Council.
Here's what's happening in LA this week.
This is LA Current.
I call on our city to not just dream of the LA we want, but to participate in making the dream come true.
This is not a situation where someone's going in and shoplifting. We're talking about the potential for a level of violence that is very, very dangerous for the community, and we are not going to tolerate that in the City of Los Angeles.
Los Angeles Public Library's annual Maker Fair is on and you're invited. They call it the greatest show and tell on earth. Prepare to be inspired. Maker Fair and City of STEM looks to the future and gathers engineers, artists, scientists, and crafters together to showcase their projects. Exhibitors include museums, NASA, and tech companies, and they will have activities, workshops, and one-of-a-kind experiences for all ages to enjoy. Los Angeles Public Library Maker Fair and City of STEM is free to attend. Reserve your spot on Eventbrite. Head to the Los Angeles State Historic Park for the Los Angeles Maker Fair and City of STEM, happening on Saturday, April 6th, beginning at 9:00 AM. For more information, visit los angeles.makerfair.com. LA's Department of Cultural Affairs, DCA, invites you to take part in the Big Read 2024. On Sunday, April 7th, enjoy a reading and discussion circle on this year's Big Read book, Can We Talk About Something More Pleasant? A Memoir by Roz Chast. Rife with laughter and tears, Can We Talk About Something More Pleasant? A Memoir is a New York Times Bestseller and a National Cartoonist Society winner. Chast's memoir provides comic relief for anyone experiencing the loss of elderly parents. The reading and discussion circle is free and open to the public, with a free copy of the book provided, along with free coffee and tea. The Big Read 2024 Reading Circle takes place in Herman Park on Sunday, April 7th, at 10:00 AM. To find out more and to let them know you'll attend, go to artintheparkla.org/events. Springtime means spring cleaning, and that goes double for the beach. Join Cabrillo Marine Aquarium educators and volunteers for their monthly beach cleanup, clearing the shore of marine debris. April's beach cleanup takes place on Saturday, April 6th, at 9:00 AM. The monthly beach cleanups are a great way to help out while enjoying the outdoors and learning about the marine environment. The beach cleanup is free and open to the public. Children must be accompanied by an adult. Volunteers meet at the steps in front of the John Olgin Auditorium. That's beach cleanup at the Cabrillo Marine Aquarium on Saturday, April 6th, at 9:00 AM. To find out more, visit Cabrilomarineaquarium.org/events. And that's a look at some things to do.
Every day, over 100 Americans die from secondhand smoke. Secondhand smoke in children can cause asthma, ear infections, and increased risk of sudden infant death syndrome. Go to smokefreehomesla.com. Learn how you can protect your home from secondhand smoke. Department of Public Health and the City of LA's Department of Aging remind you that getting vaccinated and boosted is the best way to protect yourself and your community.
And it's especially important for those at higher risk of severe diseases, such as older adults and individuals who are immunocompromised or have chronic conditions.
For COVID-19 vaccination appointments or to request in-home vaccination if you or a loved one have difficulty leaving the home, please call 211 or the Los Angeles County Department of Public Health Vaccine Call Center at 833-540-0473. Open daily, 8:00 AM to 8:30 PM.
Remember, vaccines are free and immigration status and insurance are not required.
Visit vaccinatelecouncil.com for more information about how to get vaccinated.
And visit aging.lacity.org or call 213-482-7252 for information on senior services.
California Attorney General Rob Bonta has announced more than 27 felony charges against three suspects involved in organized retail crime. Retailers of high-end designer goods were targeted, resulting in losses of over $300,000 in smash-and-grab and flash mob robberies. Los Angeles Police Department, LAPD, Organized Retail Crime Task Force, ORCTF, found the suspects had operated across six counties in California. The suspects were found to be The suspects were found to be selling stolen merchandise online through social media and were also in possession of a handgun. For more information, visit the office of the Attorney General at oag.ca.gov. Los Angeles International Airport, LAX, has some travel tips to help make your spring break travel experience safe and enjoyable. Arrive at least two hours before your scheduled departure. This allows time to check in, check your bags, proceed through TSA security, and get to your gate. If traveling internationally, LAX recommends arriving at least three hours before your departure time. Pre-book your parking. Facilities can reach capacity quickly during high travel months, but you can plan and book your parking ahead of time. LAX is undergoing multi-billion-dollar construction improvements, so you are reminded to plan for possible delays. For more travel tips, visit flylax.com. At a recent Fire Commission meeting, the Los Angeles Fire Department, LAFD, honored the first black female firefighter on the force. Having served in the U.S. Army as an intelligence specialist, Delisa Davies joined the LAFD in 1984 and worked in fire stations throughout the city. Davies worked on prioritizing women and minority recruits to the fire department, and in 2009, she was promoted to captain. Although Davies retired in 2015, she has continued to mentor and encourage firefighters at every stage of their career. For more information, visit lafd.org.
Over 4,000 choking-related deaths occur each year, with the very young and the elderly being the most at-risk groups. The key to helping someone survive a choking incident is being able to immediately recognize the signs they are in trouble. These are the most common signs someone is choking. One or both of their hands clutched to the throat. Look of panic, shock, or confusion. Inability to talk or cough. Color changing to blue or gray. If the person can cough forcefully, encourage them to keep coughing. If the person cannot cough or talk, you need to quickly take action and perform abdominal thrusts. For an adult, stand behind the person with one foot slightly in front of the other for balance. Wrap your arms around the waist and tip the person forward slightly. Make a fist and put it just above the person's navel. Grasp your fist with your other hand and press it into their stomach with a quick upward thrust, as if you're trying to lift the person up. Give five abdominal thrusts, then check if the blockage is cleared. If it is not clear, repeat as needed. If the person is pregnant or you cannot get your arms around their stomach, give chest thrust instead. Put your hands at the base of the breastbone. Press hard into the chest with a quick thrust. Perform five thrusts and check if the blockage is cleared. If the person becomes unconscious, you will need to begin CPR and contact 911.
Here's Los Angeles City Council.
Here's what's happening in L.A. this week.
This is L.A. Current.
I call on our city to not just dream of the L.A. we want, but to participate in making the dream come true.
This is not a situation where someone's going in and shoplifting. We're talking about the potential for a level of violence that is very, very dangerous for the community, and we are not going to tolerate that in the City of Los Angeles.
L.A.'s Department of Cultural Affairs, DCA, invites you to take part in the Big Read 2024. On Sunday, April 7th, enjoy a reading and discussion circle on this year's Big Read book, Can We Talk About Something More Pleasant? A Memoir by Roz Chast. Rife with laughter and tears, Can We Talk About Something More Pleasant? A Memoir is a New York Times Bestseller and a National Cartoonist Society winner. Chast's memoir provides comic relief for anyone experiencing the loss of elderly parents. The reading and discussion circle is free and open to the public, with a free copy of the book provided, along with free coffee and tea. The Big Read 2024 Reading Circle takes place in Herman Park on Sunday, April 7th, at 10:00 a.m. To find out more and to let them know you'll attend, go to artintheparkla.org/events. Springtime means spring cleaning, and that goes double for the beach. Join Cabrillo Marine Aquarium educators and volunteers for their monthly beach cleanup, clearing the shore of marine debris. April's beach cleanup takes place on Saturday, April 6th, at 9:00 a.m. The monthly beach cleanups are a great way to help out while enjoying the outdoors and learning about the marine environment. The beach cleanup is free and open to the public. Children must be accompanied by an adult. Volunteers meet at the steps in front of the John Olgin Auditorium. That's beach cleanup at the Cabrillo Marine Aquarium on Saturday, April 6th, at 9:00 a.m. To find out more, visit cabrilomarinaquarium.org/events. And that's a look at some things to do.
Every day, over 100 Americans die from secondhand smoke. Secondhand smoke in children can cause asthma, ear infections, and increased risk of sudden infant death syndrome. Go to smokefreehomesla.com. Learn how you can protect your home from secondhand smoke.
Department of Public Health and the City of L.A.'s Department of Aging remind you that getting vaccinated and boosted is the best way to protect yourself and your community.
And it's especially important for those at higher risk of severe diseases, such as older adults and individuals who are immunocompromised or have chronic conditions.
For COVID-19 vaccination appointments, or to request in-home vaccination if you or a loved one have difficulty leaving the home, please call 211 or the Los Angeles County Department of Public Health Vaccine Call Center at 833-540-0473. Open daily, 8:00 a.m. to 8:30 p.m.
Remember, vaccines are free and immigration status and insurance are not required.
Visit vaccinatelacounty.com for more information about how to get vaccinated. Visit vaccinatelecouncil.com for more information about how to get vaccinated.
And visit aging.lacity.org or call 213-482-7252 for information on senior services.
California Attorney General Rob Bonta has announced more than 27 felony charges against three suspects involved in organized retail crime. Retailers of high-end designer goods were targeted, resulting in losses of over $300,000 in smash-and-grab and flash mob robberies. Los Angeles Police Department, LAPD, Organized Retail Crime Task Force, ORCTF, found the suspects had operated across six counties in California. The suspects were found to be selling stolen merchandise online through social media and were also in possession of a handgun. For more information, visit the Office of the Attorney General at oag.ca.gov. Los Angeles International Airport, LAX, has some travel tips to help make your spring break travel experience safe and enjoyable. Arrive at least two hours before your scheduled departure. This allows time to check in, check your bags, proceed through TSA security, and get to your gate. If traveling internationally, LAX recommends arriving at least three hours before your departure time. Pre-book your parking. Facilities can reach capacity quickly during high travel months, but you can plan and book your parking ahead of time. LAX is undergoing multi-billion-dollar construction improvements, so you are reminded to plan for possible delays. For more travel tips, visit flylax.com. At a recent Fire Commission meeting, the Los Angeles Fire Department, LAPD, honored the first black female firefighter on the force. Having served in the U.S. Army as an intelligence specialist, Delisa Davies joined the LAPD in 1984 and worked in fire stations throughout the city. Davies worked on prioritizing women and minority recruits to the Fire Department, and in 2009, she was promoted to captain. Although Davies retired in 2015, she has continued to mentor and encourage firefighters at every stage of their career. For more information, visit lafd.org.
Over 4,000 choking-related deaths occur each year, with the very young and the elderly being the most at-risk groups. The key to helping someone survive a choking incident is being able to immediately recognize the signs they are in trouble. These are the most common signs someone is choking. One or both of their hands clutched to the throat. Look of panic, shock, or confusion. Inability to talk or cough. Color changing to blue or gray. If the person can cough forcefully, encourage them to keep coughing. If the person cannot cough or talk, you need to quickly take action and perform abdominal thrusts. For an adult, stand behind the person with one foot slightly in front of the other for balance. Wrap your arms around the waist and tip the person forward slightly. Make a fist and put it just above the person's navel. Grasp your fist with your other hand and press it into their stomach with a quick upward thrust, as if you're trying to lift the person up. Give five abdominal thrusts, then check if the blockage is cleared. If it is not cleared, repeat as needed. If the person is pregnant or you cannot get your arms around their stomach, give chest thrust instead. Put your hands at the base of the breastbone. Press hard into the chest with a quick thrust. Perform five thrusts and check if the blockage is cleared. If the person becomes unconscious, you will need to begin CPR and contact 911.
For your Los Angeles City Council...
Here's what's happening in L.A. this week.
This is L.A. Current.
I call on our city to not just dream of the L.A. we want, but to participate in making the dream come true.
This is not a situation where someone's going in and shoplifting. We're talking about the potential for a level of violence that is very, very dangerous for the community, and we are not going to tolerate that in the city of Los Angeles.
Los Angeles Public Library's annual Maker Fair is on and you're invited. They call it the greatest show and tell on earth. Prepare to be inspired. Maker Fair and City of STEM looks to the future and gathers engineers, artists, scientists, and crafters together to showcase their projects. Exhibitors include museums, NASA, and tech companies, and they will have activities, workshops, and one-of-a-kind experiences for all ages to enjoy. Los Angeles Public Library Maker Fair and City of STEM is free to attend. Reserve your spot on Eventbrite. Head to the Los Angeles State Historic Park for the Los Angeles Maker Fair and City of STEM, happening on Saturday, April 6th, beginning at 9:00 a.m. For more information, visit los angeles.makelfair.com. L.A.'s Department of Cultural Affairs, DCA, invites you to take part in the Big Read 2024. On Sunday, April 7th, enjoy a reading and discussion circle on this year's Big Read book, Can We Talk About Something More Pleasant? A Memoir by Roz Chast. Rife with laughter and tears, Can We Talk About Something More Pleasant? A Memoir is a New York Times bestseller and a National Cartoonist Society winner. Chast's memoir provides comic relief for anyone experiencing the loss of elderly parents. The reading and discussion circle is free and open to the public, with a free copy of the book provided, along with free coffee and tea. The Big Read 2024 Reading Circle takes place in Herman Park on Sunday, April 7th, at 10:00 a.m. To find out more and to let them know you'll attend, go to artintheparkla.org/events. Springtime means spring cleaning, and that goes double for the beach. Join Cabrillo Marine Aquarium educators and volunteers for their monthly beach cleanup, clearing the shore of marine debris. April's beach cleanup takes place on Saturday, April 6th, at 9:00 a.m. The monthly beach cleanups are a great way to help out while enjoying the outdoors and learning about the marine environment. The beach cleanup is free and open to the public. Children must be accompanied by an adult. Volunteers meet at the steps in front of the John Olgin Auditorium. That's beach cleanup at the Cabrillo Marine Aquarium on Saturday, April 6th, at 9:00 a.m. To find out more, visit cabrillomarineaquarium.org/events. And that's a look at some things to do. And that's a look at some things to do.
Every day, over 100 Americans die from secondhand smoke. Secondhand smoke in children can cause asthma, ear infections, and increased risk of sudden infant death syndrome. Go to smokefreehomesla.com. Learn how you can protect your home from secondhand smoke.
Department of Public Health and the City of L.A.'s Department of Aging remind you that getting vaccinated and boosted is the best way to protect yourself and your community.
And it's especially important for those at higher risk of severe diseases, such as older adults, and individuals who are immunocompromised or have chronic conditions.
For COVID-19 vaccination appointments, or to request in-home vaccination if you or a loved one have difficulty leaving the home, please call 211 or the Los Angeles County Department of Public Health Vaccine Call Center at 833-540-0473. Open daily, 8:00 a.m. to 8:30 p.m.
Remember, vaccines are free, and immigration status and insurance are not required.
Visit vaccinateLacounty.com for more information about how to get vaccinated.
And visit aging.lacity.org, or call 213-482-7252 for information on senior services.
California Attorney General Rob Bonta has announced more than 27 felony charges against three suspects involved in organized retail crime. Retailers of high-end designer goods were targeted, resulting in losses of over $300,000 in smash-and-grab and flash mob robberies. Los Angeles Police Department, LAPD, Organized Retail Crime Task Force, ORCTF, found the suspects had operated across six counties in California. The suspects were found to be selling stolen merchandise online through social media and were also in possession of a handgun. For more information, visit the Office of the Attorney General at oag.ca.gov. Los Angeles International Airport, LAX, has some travel tips to help make your spring break travel experience safe and enjoyable. Arrive at least two hours before your scheduled departure. This allows time to check in, check your bags, proceed through TSA security, and get to your gate. If traveling internationally, LAX recommends arriving at least three hours before your departure time. Pre-book your parking. Facilities can reach capacity quickly during high travel months, but you can plan and book your parking ahead of time. LAX is undergoing multi-billion-dollar construction improvements, so you are reminded to plan for possible delays. For more travel tips, visit flylax.com. At a recent Fire Commission meeting, the Los Angeles Fire Department, LAFD, honored the first black female firefighter on the force. Having served in the U.S. Army as an intelligence specialist, Delisa Davies joined the LAFD in 1984 and worked in fire stations throughout the city. Davies worked on prioritizing women and minority recruits to the fire department, and in 2009, she was promoted to captain. Although Davies retired in 2015, she has continued to mentor and encourage firefighters at every stage of their career. For more information, visit lafd.org.
Over 4,000 choking-related deaths occur each year, with the very young and the elderly being the most at-risk groups. The key to helping someone survive a choking incident is being able to immediately recognize the signs they are in trouble. These are the most common signs someone is choking. One or both of their hands clutched to the throat. Look of panic, shock, or confusion. Inability to talk or cough. Color changing to blue or gray. If the person can cough forcefully, encourage them to keep coughing. If the person cannot cough or talk, you need to quickly take action and perform abdominal thrusts. For an adult, stand behind the person with one foot slightly in front of the other for balance. Wrap your arms around the waist and tip the person forward slightly. Make a fist and put it just above the person's navel. Grasp your fist with your other hand and press it into their stomach with a quick upward thrust, as if you're trying to lift the person up. Give five abdominal thrusts, then check if the blockage is cleared. If it is not clear, repeat as needed. If the person is pregnant, or you cannot get your arms around their stomach, give chest thrust instead. Put your hands at the base of the breastbone. Press hard into the chest with a quick thrust. Perform five thrusts and check if the blockage is clear. If the person becomes unconscious, you will need to begin CPR and contact 911.
Your Los Angeles City Council?
Here's what's happening in L.A. this week.
This is L.A. Current.
I call on our city to not just dream of the L.A. we want, but to participate in making the dream come true.
This is not a situation where someone's going in and shoplifting. We're talking about the potential for a level of violence that is very, very dangerous for the community, and we are not going to tolerate that in the City of Los Angeles.
All right, the council is now back in open session. The council is now in open session, and we have to move forward with the work of the meeting, so if we could clear the center, please. All right, we are back now in open session. Mr. City Attorney, is there anything to report from the closed session?
Yes, but would the city clerk like to take role first?
Blumenfield, DeLeon, Harris, Dawson, Hernandez, Hutt, Krikorian, Lee, McCosker, Padilla, Park, Price, Ramon, Rodriguez, Soto Martinez, Yaroslavski, 13 members present, and a court, Mr. President.
Very good, thank you. Mr. City Attorney, is there anything to report?
Yes, so the council has continued this matter for further discussion until next week on April 12th.
Very good, thank you. Madam Clerk, is there anything else before us, or shall we recess the regular meeting to begin the special meeting?
Mr. President, council can recess the regular and go into the special now, sir.
Very good. Without objection, that's what we will do, so we will now begin the special meeting. If you could call the roll, please.
Yes, sir. Blumenfield, DeLeon, Harris, Dawson, Hernandez, Hutt, Krikorian, Lee, McCosker, Padilla, Park, Price, Ramon, Rodriguez, Soto Martinez, Yaroslavski, 13 members present, and a court, Mr. President. Shall I run through the agenda? Item number 24 is an item for which public hearing has been held, for the record. The recommendation number four for item 24 should read amend and approve recommendations 17A and 25. Item 25 is a closed-session item for which public hearing has not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration, sir.
All right, very good. So, Madam Clerk, Mr. City Attorney, if you could please read in the instructions again for comment during the special meeting.
Mr. President?
Oh, Mr. Price.
Thank you, Mr. President. Out of an abundance of caution, I am recusing myself from item 24 due to the inability to clearly discern which organizations are involved in these projects from the documents presented.
Very good, thank you. All right, Madam Clerk, Mr. City Attorney, please read in the instructions for comment during the special meeting, and then we'll be prepared to move forward with that.
Yes, sir. As indicated on the agenda, members of the public who wish to offer public comments should call 669-254-5252 and use meeting ID number 1605358466, then press pound. Press pound again when prompted for participant ID. Once admitted to the meeting, press star 9 to request to speak. When it's your turn to speak in automated Zoom voice, we'll ask you to press star 6 to unmute. Again, call 669-254-5252 and use meeting ID number 1605358466, then press pound. Press pound again when prompted for participant ID. Once admitted to the meeting, press star 9 to request to speak. Once your turn to speak in automated Zoom voice, we'll ask you to press star 6 to unmute.
So, for members of the public, because this is a special meeting, there is no general public comment, and general public comment has already been satisfied in the regular meeting. So, right now, we are only taking comments on the two agenda items, that's items number 24 and 25. You will have up to one minute per item for a maximum of two minutes.
All right, and we can begin now with the comment portion of the meeting. I'm going to call out some names, and as I call your names, make your way to the left-hand side of the chambers. You don't need to speak in the order that I call you, but please don't line up until I do call you. And if anybody requires Spanish translation, please be sure that when you do offer your comments, you pause to allow time for the translator to translate what you're saying. All right, so I'm going to call Cesar Galvez, Carmen España, Denise Rivera, Dul Selena Moreno, Edna Monroy, Elizabeth Hernandez, Georgina Serano, Hassan Zuniga, and Candido Maris.
Good afternoon. If you could please remind us of the name you signed up under and the items you would like to speak to.
Mi nombre es, traducción por favor. Mi nombre es Cesar Galvez, y estoy de acuerdo con el artículo 24 donde hagan casas pequeñas para la pobre gente que está sufriendo en las calles, pero que por favor las mejoren.
Just one minute, hold on for a second.
Hello, my name is Cesar Galvez. I am here supporting item 24. I'm asking if you can build small houses so you can help the poor people outside on the streets.
Y estoy de acuerdo con las siete enmiendas de Tahoe.
And I agree with the seven amendments of Tahoe.
Porque yo he sufrido durante los últimos 30 años donde vivo en el mismo lugar de acoso, de todas formas.
Because I have suffered for the last 30 years where I have lived at the same place and I have suffered harassment.
Gracias.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Buenas tardes.
Good afternoon.
Mi nombre es Carmen España.
My name is Carmen España.
Estoy acá porque yo apoyo el artículo 24.
I'm here to support item 24.
Yo tengo 40 años de vivir en el edificio y he tenido acosos, ¿verdad?, como de los managers, como también de los trabajadores.
I have been living in the same building for the last 40 years, and I have experienced harassment from managers and workers.
Yo necesito, ¿verdad?, cambios. Que no solo pase el tiempo y se lleven y nos den papeles y papeles y promesas y no cambien. Yo quiero que hayan cambios y estoy dispuesta a apoyar el artículo 24 cuando yo mire cambios y me den el servicio como ciudadana que merezco.
What I'm here to ask is for changes. I don't need more time and more time go by and then just get some more paperwork and more paperwork and more promises and no changes. What I need is to see changes and I need the services I deserve as a citizen.
También necesito hablar con un presentante de mi concejal Yanesis, por favor, si me pueden buscar aquí, por favor. Gracias, bonito día.
And I also need to speak to a representative from my council district, Yanesis. If someone can come up here to talk to me, I would really appreciate it. Thank you, have a good day.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hello, my name is Denise Rivera, and I'm a member of District 9 and for the LA House Coalition. And I'm going to talk a little bit about item 24. I support tiny homes, but I also think that it is important to support the seven amendments from Tahoe. Councilmember Blumenfield and City Attorney Heidi Fiston Soto, since the passage of the Tenen anti-harassment ordinance in August 2021, it has been nearly impossible to use the ordinance to stop harassment. Some harassments that I've experienced with my neighbor are illegal lockouts, illegal eviction. The LAPD has been called maybe six times. They have gone under arrest. It's just been, you know, one thing takes another, but I think it's important for us to...
Speaker, your time has expired?
I'm sorry?
Your time has expired?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Good afternoon. Which items would you like to speak to?
24.
One minute.
My name is Georgina Serano, community organizer with Inquilinos Unidos, United Tenants. Any solution we can find for solving the homelessness in the streets is wonderful. 24 is incredible, I just please improve. And at the same time, to avoid more people on the street, we really, really encourage you to support the seven amendments necessary because we notice any people is having any money as a penalty for landlords and the harassment continues every day as a community organizing, every day for eight hours. I hear crying people, people in the hospital because the harassment, somebody wants to silence because couldn't continue supporting this. We really appreciate all your support for the seven amendments in Tahoe. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good afternoon. Which item would you like to speak to?
I'd like to speak on item 24.
Okay, so you have one minute.
All right, thank you. Hello, my name is Dul Selena Moreno, and I am a member of ACE and Keep LA House Coalition. I live in District 9, and I am in support of tiny homes, but I also strongly support the seven proposed amendments to close loopholes in Tahoe, such as redefine harassment in line with established and more successful definitions of jurisdictions, to reform abusive right of landlords entering the properties without permission, and to prohibit literal changes to material items of a rental agreement or lease. Since Tahoe has been passed in August 2021, it's been nearly impossible to use ordinance to stop harassment. Examples I've experienced of harassment is my landlord entering while I'm changing or while my brothers and no one's at home to just look around the building.
Speaker, your time has expired. Next speaker.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good afternoon.
Hello, good afternoon. My name is Elizabeth Hernandez. I'm an organizer with ACE. I'm also a part of the coalition with Keep LA House. I live in District 9, and we support any project that is going to house our communities, the tiny homes. It's amazing if it's going to be for our people that are low income. But also, the seven amendments, you know, they're really important. One of them being to extend the statute of limitations to Tahoe claims to three years back. So, I suffered a lot of harassment before even, you know, being able to actually have a peaceful life in, you know, where I live. And it didn't just affect me, but it was affecting my children, and I'm seeing it now with every other tenant that I speak to. So, councilmember Blumenfield and City Attorney Heidi Fiston Soto, we need you guys to really support these amendments, and we need to keep working on keeping our people housed. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. My name is Maria Breones, and I'm a member of ACE. I live in the 8th district, and I'm also a member of the Keep LA House Coalition. I would like to ask, it's a big request, I know, to all the council members to support the seven amendments on Tahoe. I was one that lived through three years of continuous harassment, almost 24/7, and we need to enforce this law. We need to make it stronger. We need to protect our tenants. We need to protect the people that is more at risk of being homeless. I support the item 24 as well, the tiny houses, and I don't want it, believe me, I don't want to live on the street, but I was forced to be out on the street. And I'm still supporting the new laws, the new amendments, and I'm still supporting my council members as well. So, I greatly appreciate your attention to these requests from us, the needy people, the ones that are vulnerable. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hello, councilmembers and president. Once again, I was here last Wednesday talking about the support of the 24 amendment to create affordable housing, which is important, but also like our colleagues and my tenants that I organize with are mentioning about Tahoe, that's important. Recently, I just talked to one of the tenants in the community of Katy, which is a senior citizen, that got evicted with loopholes from the landlord, which she never received a lawful detainee or a cover letter. She's a lady that, her English is a second language. She lives in Westwood, which is a pretty primary, nice area, but unfortunately, she's been with 10 days without being, you know, with a house and looking for, to get her stuff back, you know? And this is senior citizens of 120 apartments, you know, dealing with harassment like this. So, we need to make sure that we pass amendments to fix it. Have a good day.
Thank you very much, and you as well. Okay, I'm going to call out a few more names. Edna Monroy, Daniel Gus, Spindler, somebody with the silly fake name Kanye West, Lucia Abad, Michael Bigsby, Nancy Villanueva, Joey Mendez, Karen Gutierrez, Maria Breones, Sofia Mendoza, Rekandal W., and Kiki. Good afternoon.
Hi, I'm Edna Monroy, and I'm here to speak on item 26 and general public comment.
So, there is no item 26 on today's agenda on either the special or the regular, and the only items that are currently open are 24 and 25.
I meant 24. I apologize. 24 and general public comment.
So, there is no general public comment because this is a special meeting?
Okay, all right, we still get a minute. Can you restart my clock, please?
Start the time over, please. One second, one second, we're going to adjust it. Okay, there you go.
Okay, so Edna Monroy with Sage and the Keep LA House Coalition, and I'm here to thank councilmember Nitya Rahman for her support on protecting all Angelenos. And I want to call especially on councilmember Bob Blumenfield and the city attorney to support the Tenen anti-harassment ordinance. We need all seven amendments. We can't protect Angelenos if we don't have all seven amendments. We cannot pick and choose because every day that goes by, more and more Angelenos become unhoused and fall into homelessness, poverty, and mental health challenges. So, we really need your support, and we need it today. I want to make sure that the LA Housing Department is doing their job as well and not just closing complaints because we have the ULA funding. And with the ULA funding, there should not be any issues as long as we have a strong Tahoe ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good afternoon. My name is Karen Gutierrez. I am a member of ACE and to keep the LA House Coalition. I live under District 9, and I am definitely here strongly supporting the seven amendments. Also, I want to talk quickly about the harassment that I have suffered, which led for me to become a victim of a crime scene. I almost lost my life due to all this ordinance not being followed, and I just want to ask you guys to please make some changes and not just keep piling out paperwork because life has been coming up into an end due to this ordinance not being followed properly. I also want to talk about how important it is for tenants and landlords to be respected, only if it's within both sides. I feel like the system has failed me a lot because of the fact that none of these things has been in place and being followed at all. Thank you, have a nice day.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good afternoon. Which items would you like to speak to?
Danielgus.substack.com would like to speak about both items, please.
So, you have two minutes for the items.
Danielgus.substack.com for identification purposes only. I'm not the author and surgeon. I'm the journalist and LA Press Club online journalist of the year. Item number 24, I can solve homeless for you, just like you solve a lot of other problems in LA. Simply redefine the meaning of homelessness. What is homelessness? Just redefine it, the problem goes away. That's how this government does this. So, in all of this rigmarole that we have here, where hundreds of millions of dollars are going to these government nonprofits, where we never quite see where the money's going, just declare homeless as nonexistent. Say it's a birthday cake, say it's a Toyota Corolla. Just redefine homelessness, and you've defined homelessness and you've solved it. Isn't that amazing? And I can run for city council, too. So, just redefine what it is. Redefine homelessness and it disappears, just like you redefine euthanasia and you say you don't kill animals and you're one of the highest kill animal pounds in the region. Just redefine what euthanasia means, because you do that all the time. Item number 25, councilmembers, I wrote a story several months ago about how you were deliberately hiding migrants who crossed the border in city recreation centers, including in Council District 2, the North Hollywood Recreation Center. And you had people who I interviewed firsthand from China, from Haiti, from Venezuela, and city park employees were told, and they told me that they were told by powerful people in City Hall, just say that they're homeless people. So, don't give us this crap about the equity and how these rules apply against black people. You are rigging the game, and the FBI should look into how you're spending this money because you're lying about it.
Next speaker, please.
My name is...
Good afternoon. Which items would you like to speak to?
Item 24.
Okay, so you have one minute.
My name is Joey Mendez. I am a member of ACE and Keep LA House Coalition. I live in District 9, and I am in support of tiny homes and also the proposed amendments to close loopholes in the Tenen anti-harassment ordinance. Since August 2021, it has been nearly impossible to use the ordinance to stop harassment. In my experience, there was harassment which affected my brothers and sister. The harassment went as far as the manager calling child services without a... the manager calling child services without a cause or reason. It affected me in my school and my education, worried we weren't going to have a roof over our heads. The manager would constantly be screaming at my mom, trying to be intimidating. There was this one time where the manager and a worker came and my folks had told them to wait because they had their hands full at the moment. Despite this, they came inside anyway. The manager walked into the bedroom where my sister was changing because she had just got out the shower.
Speaker, your time has expired. Next speaker.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Hola, buenas tardes. Necesito traducción.
Hi, how are you? I need interpretation.
Voy a hablar en el artículo 24.
I'm going to talk about Item 24.
Mi nombre es Nancy Villanueva, organizadora con ACE y estoy con la coalición Keep L.A. House y apoyo el Tiny Homes.
My name is Nancy Villanueva. I'm an organizer with ACE and I'm also part of the Coalition with L.A. And I also am in support of tiny homes.
También apoyo firmemente las siete enmiendas que están propuestas para cerrar los vacíos legales en la ordenanza contra el acoso. Esta es una emergencia y necesitamos el apoyo de ustedes.
I'm also in support of the seven amendments to close all the loopholes for harassment ordinance. And this is an emergency and we are asking for the support of all of you.
El mensaje es dirigido específicamente para el concejal Bloomingfield y el abogado de la ciudad.
The message is specifically going to Councilmember Bloomingfield and the City Attorney.
Deben aprobar e implementar la ley Tahoe, ya que tenemos cientos de personas en la ciudad de Los Ángeles que están sufriendo acoso.
And you need to implement and approve the Tahoe Act because there are hundreds of people in L.A. that are going through harassment.
Siento que nos están ignorando y están ignorando a la ciudad. La gente debe de vivir tranquila y no con acoso. Así es que, por favor, pongan atención y implementen Tahoe.
We feel that we're being ignored and the city is being ignored. And we think that we deserve to live in peace without facing any harassment. So we need your attention.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good afternoon. Which items would you like to speak to?
Buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Sofia Mendoza y necesito traducción.
Hi, how are you? My name is Sofia Mendoza and I need translation.
Voy a hablar sobre el artículo 24.
I'm going to talk about Item 24.
Okay, so you have one minute.
Para casas pequeñas.
For tiny homes.
De nuevo, mi nombre es Sofia Mendoza. Soy miembro de ACE y vivo en el Distrito Nueve.
And one more time, my name is Sofia Mendoza. I'm a member of ACE and I live in District Nine.
Y estoy con la coalición Keep L.A. House.
And I'm part of the Coalition Keep L.A. House.
Apoyo firmemente las siete enmiendas propuestas para cerrar los vacíos.
And I am strongly supportive of the seven amendments to close the loopholes for the harassment ordinance.
Legales en la ordenanza contra el acoso de inquilinos.
Against the renters.
También al concejal Bo- Bloomingfield.
And this is also going towards-
Y a la abogada de la ciudad.
Councilmember Bloomingfield and the City Attorney.
Deben aprobar e implementar la ley Tahoe.
I'm asking you to approve and implement the Tahoe Act.
Porque yo soy una inquilina que he sufrido mucho de acoso. Incluso ahorita tengo una demanda.
Because I'm a renter and I have faced many times harassment and even now I'm going through a lawsuit.
De desalojo por causa de que la dueña no quiso recibir la renta cuando se la pagaban, cuando yo pedí ayuda para que le pagaran la renta.
And I'm going through an eviction because the owner didn't want to receive the rent when we were trying to give her the rent.
Por eso es importante que ustedes nos pongan atención, los concejales. Nosotros estamos aquí para que nos escuchen y nos apoyen sobre esta-
Speaker, your time has expired.
Thank you.
And that is the reason why we're asking for your attention, for all the attention of the council members so you can listen to us. Yes.
Gracias. Okay, next speaker, please.
Good afternoon. Which items would you like to speak to?
Buenos días, necesito traducción.
En qué asuntos quiere usted hablar?
Del artículo 24.
Item 24.
Okay, so you have one minute.
Tiene un minuto.
Mi nombre es Lucita Vlad.
My name is Lucita Vlad.
Soy miembro de ACE.
I'm an ACE member.
Y de la coalición Keep L.A. House.
And also part of the Coalition Keep L.A. House.
Vivo en el Distrito Nueve.
I live in District Nine.
Y apoyo firmemente las siete enmiendas, propuestas para cerrar los vacíos legales en las ordenanzas contra el acoso del inquilino, Tahoe.
And I'm here in support of the seven amendments to close the loopholes against the harassment.
Mi caso es de que yo quisiera que nos apoya el Tahoe porque la dueña, tengo dos años de decirle que me repare mi casa y no me la repara. Manda personas y queda, me llama porque no llega a la casa. Y me dice, voy a llegar, y no llegan a reparar. Yo pierdo días de trabajo. ¿Cómo le voy a pagar su renta?
Un segundo, señora. My situation is that for the last two years, I have been requesting to get improvements in my house. And then the owner says that she will do it and then she's going to go and call, but nothing happens. How am I supposed to pay for my rent? Because sometimes I have to take days off.
Necesito que simplemente la ley Tahoe para que nos apoyen. También apoyo a las pequeñas viviendas para las personas que están viviendo en las calles, que necesitan un hogar. Apoyen los concejales. Gracias.
I'm in support of Tahoe Act. And I'm also in support of tiny homes. Please, council members, we need your support. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. You have two minutes for the items. Please begin.
Yes, pumpkin head, thank you. So, here we go. The Daily Journal cites Paul Martin Krikorian as being complimented by Judge Carter.
So, okay.
Oh, oh, you dumb shit. So.
So you're speaking to Item 25.
How did you know?
Go ahead.
How did you know? Kevin, is the guy clairvoyant? How did he know? So, I was going to compliment you, but I'll just say fuck you. Yes, can I continue? Yes, go ahead. Well, I was going to compliment you because this is in the Daily Journal, but since you're a fucking asshole and a dirty Armenian, I'm going to say you're doing a bad job.
So you need to get to the agenda.
I disagree with Judge Carter. I disagree. I think you're a sneak and I don't think you're complying with the L.A. Alliance settlement. But you have him fooled, don't you? Yes.
Okay, you can move on to Item 24 now.
Yes, thank you asshole. And finally, a big fuck you to Bob Blebenbleul, Tofum Avenue. We don't want your homeless project. Get it out of there and put it back to the parking lot it used to be. And Kevin, shame on you, closing all of those parking lots in downtown L.A. just to house homeless criminals? No, you don't want to do that. No. And then, of course, Marquezzi.
No, he's not on the list.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Harris Dawson, for not taking our public lands. And then, of course, who else is here? Oh, the indicted one, Current Price, is eating one of those free meals. Don't worry, Mr. Price, you don't have to eat those meals. They're going to-
Speak to the agenda.
Yeah, they'll give you meals all-
Speak to the agenda.
They'll give you three free.
Okay, you're forwarding the rest of your time. You've been warned.
Okay, we'll go to the callers now on the phone. We'll take, Mr. Spindler, you're disturbing the meeting and disrupting. You're instructed to be quiet or leave the meeting. All right, let's take the first caller. We'll take 10 minutes of calls.
First caller, which items would you like to speak on?
I'm sorry, I don't see the need to continue tiny home villages. Isn't the City of Los Angeles aware homelessness has been solved? There's no longer garbage on the streets? That's the conclusion what we'd come to watching local newscasts, when the City of Los Angeles is now violating civil rights, trespassing on private property to clean private front yards? Obviously, the City of Los Angeles has no need, has no worry of homelessness or picking up the garbage on the streets. Oh, I'm sorry, I stand corrected as I look outside my window and I see people experiencing homelessness, trespassing, and dumping their garbage. Please stop reinforcing the notion that council offices are worth nothing. You are enforcing the notion that if you want something done in the city, go to your local media. Again, there is homelessness and people experiencing homelessness and garbage on the streets. Please work on that. Thank you.
Next caller, please.
Next caller, which items would you like to speak on?
Yes, sir. Yes, thank you for taking my call. Item 24.
Okay, so you have one minute for Item 24. Please begin.
Thank you, sir. In regards to 24, and you know, one of the ideas I brought up was placing motorhomes on DWP property. As I was walking through the mall from the parking lot, I thought, wait a minute, we have all this empty space. Why don't we make this a transition area where people who are losing their leases would be able to come there and we would have, we would redesign that area and make it available for people for temporary, you know, loss of housing would be able to stay there. We could set up mental health. We could do a lot of things to help them. And it's just an idea and I'm hoping maybe one of the council people will say, you know what, that's not a bad idea. Let's see. But right now, the mall is useless. Let's utilize it for the people of this great city. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller, please.
No more callers in the queue.
Okay, that will close public comment then for the special meeting. And Mr. Price, we're going to go ahead and vote now. So if you'd like to step out on Item 24. All right, very good. So Item number 24 is now before us. Do any members wish to be heard on this item? Seeing none, let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the votes.
Twelve eyes.
Mr. President, there's a request to send 24 forthwith, sir.
Without objection, that will be the order. Madam Clerk, is there anything else that we can take up in open session?
No, sir.
All right, we'll proceed now to prepare the room for closed session. Mr. Spindler, please leave the chamber expeditiously. Mr. Spindler, please hurry up and leave the meeting.
Over 4,000 choking-related deaths occur each year, with the very young and the elderly being the most at-risk groups. The key to helping someone survive a choking incident is being able to immediately recognize the signs they are in trouble. These are the most common signs someone is choking. One or both of their hands clutched to the throat. Look of panic, shock, or confusion. Inability to talk or cough. Color changing to blue or gray. If the person can cough forcefully, encourage them to keep coughing. If the person cannot cough or talk, you need to quickly take action and perform abdominal thrusts. For an adult, stand behind the person with one foot slightly in front of the other for balance. Wrap your arms around the waist and tip the person forward slightly. Make a fist and put it just above the person's navel. Grasp your fist with your other hand and press it into their stomach with a quick upward thrust, as if you're trying to lift the person up. Give five abdominal thrusts, then check if the blockage is cleared. If it is not cleared, repeat as needed. If the person is pregnant or you cannot get your arms around their stomach, give chest thrust instead. Put your hands at the base of the breast bone. Press hard into the chest with a quick thrust. Perform five thrusts and check if the blockage is cleared. If the person becomes unconscious, you will need to begin CPR and contact 911.
I call on our city to not just dream of the LA we want, but to participate in making the dream come true.
California Attorney General Rob Bonta has announced more than 27 felony charges against three suspects involved in organized retail crime. Retailers of high-end designer goods were targeted, resulting in losses of over $300,000 Los Angeles Police Department, LAPD, Organized Retail Crime Task Force, ORCTF, found the suspects had operated across six counties in California. The suspects were found to be selling stolen merchandise online through social media and were also in possession of a handgun. Los Angeles International Airport, LAX, has some travel tips to help make your spring This allows time to check in, check your bags, proceed through TSA security, and get to your gate. If traveling internationally, LAX recommends arriving at least three hours before your departure time. Pre-book your parking. Facilities can reach capacity quickly during high travel months, but you can plan and book your parking ahead of time. LAX is undergoing multi-billion dollar construction improvements, so you are reminded to plan for possible delays. For more travel tips, visit flylax.com. At a recent Fire Commission meeting, the Los Angeles Fire Department, LAFD, honored the first black female firefighter on the force. Having served in the US Army as an intelligence specialist, Delisa Davies joined the LAFD in 1984 and worked in fire stations throughout the city. Davies worked on prioritizing women and minority recruits to the fire department, and in 2009, she was promoted to captain. Although Davies retired in 2015, she has continued to mentor and encourage firefighters at every stage of their career. For more information, visit lafd.org. Over 4,000 choking-related deaths occur each year, with the very young and the elderly being the most at-risk groups. The key to helping someone survive a choking incident is being able to immediately recognize the signs they are in trouble. These are the most common signs someone is choking. One or both of their hands clutched to the throat. Look of panic, shock, or confusion. Inability to talk or cough. Color changing to blue or gray. If the person can cough forcefully, encourage them to keep coughing. If the person cannot cough or talk, you need to quickly take action and perform abdominal thrusts. For an adult, stand behind the person with one foot slightly in front of the other for balance. Wrap your arms around the waist and tip the person forward slightly. Make a fist and put it just above the person's navel. Grasp your fist with your other hand and press it into their stomach with a quick upward thrust, as if you're trying to lift the person up. Give five abdominal thrusts, then check if the blockage is cleared. If it is not cleared, repeat as needed. If the person is pregnant or you cannot get your arms around their stomach, give chest thrust instead. Put your hands at the base of the breastbone, press hard into the chest with a quick thrust. Perform five thrusts and check if the blockage is cleared. If the person becomes unconscious, you will need to begin CPR and contact 911.
This is LA Current.
I call on our city to not just dream of the LA we want, but to participate in making the dream come true.
California Attorney General Rob Bonta has announced more than 27 felony charges against three suspects involved in organized retail crime. Retailers of high-end designer goods were targeted, resulting in losses of over $300,000 in smash-and-grab and flash mob robberies. Los Angeles Police Department, LAPD, Organized Retail Crime Task Force, ORCTF, found the suspects had operated across six counties in California. The suspects were found to be selling stolen merchandise online through social media and were also in possession of a handgun. For more information, visit the office of the Attorney General at oag.ca.gov. Los Angeles International Airport, LAX, has some travel tips to help make your spring break travel experience safe and enjoyable. Arrive at least two hours before your scheduled departure. This allows time to check in, check your bags, proceed through TSA security, and get to your gate. If traveling internationally, LAX recommends arriving at least three hours before your departure time. Pre-book your parking. Facilities can reach capacity quickly during high travel months, but you can plan and book your parking ahead of time. LAX is undergoing multi-billion dollar construction improvements, so you are reminded to plan for possible delays. For more travel tips, visit flylax.com. At a recent Fire Commission meeting, the Los Angeles Fire Department, LAFD, honored the first black female firefighter on the force. Having served in the US Army as an intelligence specialist, Delisa Davies joined the LAFD in 1984 and worked in fire stations throughout the city. Davies worked on prioritizing women and minority recruits to the fire department, and in 2009, she was promoted to captain. Although Davies retired in 2015, she has continued to mentor and encourage firefighters at every stage of their career. For more information, visit lafd.org.
Over 4,000 choking-related deaths occur each year, with the very young and the elderly being the most at-risk groups. The key to helping someone survive a choking incident is being able to immediately recognize the signs they are in trouble. These are the most common signs someone is choking. One or both of their hands clutched to the throat. Look of panic, shock, or confusion. Inability to talk or cough. Color changing to blue or gray. If the person can cough forcefully, encourage them to keep coughing. If the person cannot cough or talk, you need to quickly take action and perform abdominal thrusts. For an adult, stand behind the person with one foot slightly in front of the other for balance. Wrap your arms around the waist and tip the person forward slightly. Make a fist and put it just above the person's navel. Grasp your fist with your other hand and press it into their stomach with a quick upward thrust, as if you're trying to lift the person up. Give five abdominal thrusts, then check if the blockage is cleared. If it is not cleared, repeat as needed. If the person is pregnant or you cannot get your arms around their stomach, give chest thrust instead. Put your hands at the base of the breastbone, press hard into the chest with a quick thrust. Perform five thrusts and check if the blockage is cleared. If the person becomes unconscious, you will need to begin CPR and contact 911.
This is LA Current.
I call on our city to not just dream of the LA we want, but to participate in making the dream come true.
Every day, over 100 Americans die from secondhand smoke. Secondhand smoke in children can cause asthma, ear infections, and increased risk of sudden infant death syndrome. Go to smokefreehomesla.com. Learn how you can protect your home from secondhand smoke.
Department of Public Health and the City of LA's Department of Aging remind you that getting vaccinated and boosted is the best way to protect yourself and your community.
And it's especially important for those at higher risk of severe diseases, such as older adults and individuals who are immunocompromised or have chronic conditions.
For COVID-19 vaccination appointments or to request in-home vaccination if you or a loved one have difficulty leaving the home, please call 211 or the Los Angeles County Department of Public Health Vaccine Call Center at 833-540-0473. Open daily, 8:00 AM to 8:30 PM.
Remember, vaccines are free and immigration status and insurance are not required.
Visit vaccinatelecouncil.com for more information about how to get vaccinated.
And visit aging.lacity.org or call 213-482-7252 for information on senior services.
California Attorney General Rob Bonta has announced more than 27 felony charges against three suspects involved in organized retail crime. Retailers of high-end designer goods were targeted, resulting in losses of over $300,000 in smash-and-grab and flash mob robberies. Los Angeles Police Department, LAPD, Organized Retail Crime Task Force, ORCTF, found the suspects had operated across six counties in California. The suspects were found to be selling stolen merchandise online through social media and were also in possession of a handgun. For more information, visit the office of the Attorney General at oag.ca.gov. Los Angeles International Airport, LAX, has some travel tips to help make your spring break travel experience safe and enjoyable. Arrive at least two hours before your scheduled departure. This allows time to check in, check your bags, proceed through TSA security, and get to your gate. If traveling internationally, LAX recommends arriving at least three hours before your departure time. Pre-book your parking. Facilities can reach capacity quickly during high travel months, but you can plan and book your parking ahead of time. LAX is undergoing multi-billion dollar construction improvements, so you are reminded to plan for possible delays. For more travel tips, visit flylax.com. At a recent Fire Commission meeting, the Los Angeles Fire Department, LAFD, honored the first black female firefighter on the force. Having served in the US Army as an intelligence specialist, Delisa Davies joined the LAFD in 1984 and worked in fire stations throughout the city. Davies worked on prioritizing women and minority recruits to the fire department, and in 2009, she was promoted to captain. Although Davies retired in 2015, she has continued to mentor and encourage firefighters at every stage of their career. For more information, visit lafd.org.
Over 4,000 choking-related deaths occur each year, with the very young and the elderly being the most at-risk groups. The key to helping someone survive a choking incident is being able to immediately recognize the signs they are in trouble. These are the most common signs someone is choking. One or both of their hands clutched to the throat. Look of panic, shock, or confusion. Inability to talk or cough. Color changing to blue or gray. If the person can cough forcefully, encourage them to keep coughing. If the person cannot cough or talk, you need to quickly take action and perform abdominal thrusts. For an adult, stand behind the person with one foot slightly in front of the other for balance. Wrap your arms around the waist and tip the person forward slightly. Make a fist and put it just above the person's navel. Grasp your fist with your other hand and press it into their stomach with a quick upward thrust, as if you're trying to lift the person up. Give five abdominal thrusts, then check if the blockage is cleared. If it is not cleared, repeat as needed. If the person is pregnant or you cannot get your arms around their stomach, give chest thrust instead. Put your hands at the base of the breastbone, press hard into the chest with a quick thrust. Perform five thrusts and check if the blockage is cleared. If the person becomes unconscious, you will need to begin CPR and contact 911.
Here's what's happening in LA this week.
This is LA Current.
I call on our city to not just dream of the LA we want, but to participate in making
I call on our city to not just dream of the LA we want, but to participate in making the dream come true.
This is not a situation where someone's going in and shoplifting. We're talking about the potential for a level of violence that is very, very dangerous for the community, and we are not going to tolerate that in the City of Los Angeles.
Los Angeles Public Library's Annual Maker Fair is on, and you're invited. They call it the greatest show and tell on earth. Prepare to be inspired. Maker Fair and City of STEM looks to the future and gathers engineers, artists, scientists, and crafters together to showcase their projects. Exhibitors include museums, NASA, and tech companies, and they will have activities, workshops, and one-of-a-kind experiences for all ages to enjoy. Los Angeles Public Library Maker Fair and City of STEM is free to attend. Reserve your spot on Eventbrite. Head to the Los Angeles State Historic Park for the Los Angeles Maker Fair and City of STEM, happening on Saturday, April 6th, beginning at 9:00 a.m. For more information, visit los angeles.makelfair.com. LA's Department of Cultural Affairs (DCA) invites you to take part in the Big Read 2024. On Sunday, April 7th, enjoy a reading and discussion circle on this year's Big Read book, Can We Talk About Something More Pleasant? A Memoir by Roz Chast. Rife with laughter and tears, Can We Talk About Something More Pleasant? A Memoir is a New York Times bestseller and a National Cartoonist Society winner. Chast's memoir provides comic relief for anyone experiencing the loss of elderly parents. The reading and discussion circle is free and open to the public, with a free copy of the book provided, along with free coffee and tea. The Big Read 2024 Reading Circle takes place in Herman Park on Sunday, April 7th, at 10:00 a.m. To find out more and to let them know you'll attend, go to artintheparkla.org/events. Springtime means spring cleaning, and that goes double for the beach. Join Cabrillo Marine Aquarium educators and volunteers for their monthly beach cleanup, clearing the shore of marine debris. April's beach cleanup takes place on Saturday, April 6th, at 9:00 a.m. The monthly beach cleanups are a great way to help out while enjoying the outdoors and learning about the marine environment. The beach cleanup is free and open to the public. Children must be accompanied by an adult. Volunteers meet at the steps in front of the John Olgin Auditorium. That's beach cleanup at the Cabrillo Marine Aquarium on Saturday, April 6th, at 9:00 a.m. To find out more, visit cabrilmarinaquarium.org/events. And that's a look at some things to do.
Every day, over 100 Americans die from secondhand smoke. Secondhand smoke in children can cause asthma, ear infections, and increased risk of sudden infant death syndrome. Go to smokefreehomesla.com. Learn how you can protect your home from secondhand smoke.
Department of Public Health and the City of LA's Department of Aging remind you that getting vaccinated and boosted is the best way to protect yourself and your community.
And it's especially important for those at higher risk of severe diseases such as older adults and individuals who are immunocompromised or have chronic conditions.
For COVID-19 vaccination appointments or to request in-home vaccination if you or a loved one have difficulty leaving the home, please call 211 or the Los Angeles County Department of Public Health Vaccine Call Center at 833-540-0473, open daily 8:00 a.m. to 8:30 p.m.
Remember, vaccines are free and immigration status and insurance are not required.
Visit vaccinatelecouncil.com for more information about how to get vaccinated.
And visit aging.lacity.org or call 213-482-7252 for information on senior services.
California Attorney General Rob Bonta has announced more than 27 felony charges against three suspects involved in organized retail crime. Retailers of high-end designer goods were targeted, resulting in losses of over $300,000 in smash-and-grab and flash-mob robberies. Los Angeles Police Department (LAPD) Organized Retail Crime Task Force (ORCTF) found the suspects had operated across six counties in California. The suspects were found to be selling stolen merchandise online through social media and were also in possession of a handgun. For more information, visit the office of the Attorney General at oag.ca.gov. Los Angeles International Airport (LAX) has some travel tips to help make your spring break travel experience safe and enjoyable. Arrive at least two hours before your scheduled departure. This allows time to check in, check your bags, proceed through TSA security, and get to your gate. If traveling internationally, LAX recommends arriving at least three hours before your departure time. Pre-book your parking. Facilities can reach capacity quickly during high travel months, but you can plan and book your parking ahead of time. LAX is undergoing multi-billion dollar construction improvements, so you are reminded to plan for possible delays. For more travel tips, visit flylax.com. At a recent Fire Commission meeting, the Los Angeles Fire Department (LAFD) honored the first black female firefighter on the force. Having served in the U.S. Army as an intelligence specialist, Delisa Davies joined the LAFD in 1984 and worked in fire stations throughout the city. Davies worked on prioritizing women and minority recruits to the fire department, and in 2009, she was promoted to captain. Although Davies retired in 2015, she has continued to mentor and encourage firefighters at every stage of their career. For more information, visit lafd.org.
Over 4,000 choking-related deaths occur each year, with the very young and the elderly being the most at-risk groups. The key to helping someone survive a choking incident is being able to immediately recognize the signs is being able to immediately recognize the signs they are in trouble. These are the most common signs someone is choking: One or both of their hands clutched to the throat. Look of panic, shock, or confusion. Inability to talk or cough. Color changing to blue or gray. If the person can cough forcefully, encourage them to keep coughing. If the person cannot cough or talk, you need to quickly take action and perform abdominal thrusts. For an adult, stand behind the person with one foot slightly in front of the other for balance. Wrap your arms around the waist and tip the person forward slightly. Make a fist and put it just above the person's navel. Grasp your fist with your other hand and press it into their stomach with a quick upward thrust, as if you're trying to lift the person up. Give five abdominal thrusts, then check if the blockage is cleared. If it is not clear, repeat as needed. If the person is pregnant or you cannot get your arms around their stomach, give chest thrust instead. Put your hands at the base of the breastbone. Press hard into the chest with a quick thrust. Perform five thrusts and check if the blockage is cleared. If the person becomes unconscious, you will need to begin CPR and contact 911.
From the Los Angeles City Council...
Here's what's happening in LA this week.
This is LA Current.
I call on our city to not just dream of the LA we want, but to participate in making the dream come true.
This is not a situation where someone's going in and shoplifting. We're talking about the potential for a level of violence that is very, very dangerous for the community, and we are not going to tolerate that in the City of Los Angeles.
Los Angeles Public Library's Annual Maker Fair is on and you're invited. They call it the greatest show and tell on earth. Prepare to be inspired. Maker Fair and City of STEM looks to the future and gathers engineers, artists, scientists, and crafters together to showcase their projects. Exhibitors include museums, NASA, and tech companies, and they will have activities, workshops, and one-of-a-kind experiences for all ages to enjoy. Los Angeles Public Library Maker Fair and City of STEM is free to attend. Reserve your spot on Eventbrite. Head to the Los Angeles State Historic Park for the Los Angeles Maker Fair and City of STEM, happening on Saturday, April 6th, beginning at 9:00 AM. For more information, visit los angeles.makerfair.com. LA's Department of Cultural Affairs, DCA, invites you to take part in the Big Read 2024. On Sunday, April 7th, enjoy a reading and discussion circle on this year's Big Read book, Can We Talk About Something More Pleasant: A Memoir by Roz Chast. Rife with laughter and tears, Can We Talk About Something More Pleasant: A Memoir is a New York Times Bestseller and a National Cartoonist Society winner. Chast's memoir provides comic relief for anyone experiencing the loss of elderly parents. The reading and discussion circle is free and open to the public, with a free copy of the book provided, along with free coffee and tea. The Big Read 2024 Reading Circle takes place in Herman Park on Sunday, April 7th, at 10:00 AM. To find out more and to let them know you'll attend, go to artintheparkla.org/events. Springtime means spring cleaning, and that goes double for the beach. Join Cabrillo Marine Aquarium educators and volunteers for their monthly beach cleanup, clearing the shore of marine debris. April's beach cleanup takes place on Saturday, April 6th, at 9:00 AM. The monthly beach cleanups are a great way to help out while enjoying the outdoors and learning about the marine environment. The beach cleanup is free and open to the public. Children must be accompanied by an adult. Volunteers meet at the steps in front of the John Olgin Auditorium. That's beach cleanup at the Cabrillo Marine Aquarium on Saturday, April 6th, at 9:00 AM. To find out more, visit cabrilmarinaquarium.org/events. And that's a look at some things to do.
Every day, over 100 Americans die from secondhand smoke. Secondhand smoke in children can cause asthma, ear infections, and increased risk of sudden infant death syndrome. Go to smokefreehomesla.com. Learn how you can protect your home from secondhand smoke.
Department of Public Health and the City of LA's Department of Aging remind you that getting vaccinated and boosted is the best way to protect yourself and your community.
And it's especially important for those at higher risk of severe diseases, such as older adults and individuals who are immunocompromised or have chronic conditions.
For COVID-19 vaccination appointments or to request in-home vaccination if you or a loved one have difficulty leaving the home, please call 211 or the Los Angeles County Department of Public Health Vaccine Call Center at 833-540-0473, open daily 8:00 AM to 8:30 PM.
Remember, vaccines are free and immigration status and insurance are not required.
Visit vaccinatelecouncil.com for more information about how to get vaccinated.
And visit aging.lacity.org or call 213-482-7252 for information on senior services.
California Attorney General Rob Bonta has announced more than 27 felony charges against three suspects involved in organized retail crime. Retailers of high-end designer goods were targeted, resulting in losses of over $300,000 in smash-and-grab and flash mob robberies. Los Angeles Police Department, LAPD, Organized Retail Crime Task Force, ORCTF, found the suspects had operated across six counties in California. The suspects were found to be selling stolen merchandise online through social media and were also in possession of a handgun. For more information, visit the office of the Attorney General at oag.ca.gov. Los Angeles International Airport, LAX, has some travel tips to help make your spring break travel experience safe and enjoyable. break travel experience safe and enjoyable. Arrive at least two hours before your scheduled departure. This allows time to check in, check your bags, proceed through TSA security, and get to your gate. If traveling internationally, LAX recommends arriving at least three hours before your departure time. Pre-book your parking. Facilities can reach capacity quickly during high travel months, but you can plan and book your parking ahead of time. LAX is undergoing multi-billion-dollar construction improvements, so you are reminded to plan for possible delays. For more travel tips, visit flylax.com. At a recent Fire Commission meeting, the Los Angeles Fire Department, LAFD, honored the first black female firefighter on the force. Having served in the U.S. Army as an intelligence specialist, Delisa Davies joined the LAFD in 1984 and worked in fire stations throughout the city. Davies worked on prioritizing women and minority recruits to the fire department, and in 2009, she was promoted to captain. Although Davies retired in 2015, she has continued to mentor and encourage firefighters at every stage of their career. For more information, visit lafd.org.
Over 4,000 choking-related deaths occur each year, with the very young and the elderly being the most at-risk groups. The key to helping someone survive a choking incident is being able to immediately recognize the signs they are in trouble.
Back in open session in our special meeting. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Yes, sir. Bloomingfield, DeLeon, Harrison, Hernandez, Hut, Krikorian, Lee, McCosker, Padilla, Park, Price, Roman, Rodriguez, Soto Martinez, Jaroslawski, 12 members present in court, Mr. President.
Thank you. Mr. City Attorney, is there anything to report from closed session?
No, Mr. President, there's nothing to report out of closed session.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, is there anything else that we can take up in the special meeting?
Uh, no, sir.
All right, then without objection, the special meeting is adjourned, and we will again resume the regular meeting. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Bloomingfield, DeLeon, Harrison, Hernandez, Hut, Krikorian, Lee, McCosker, Padilla, Park, Price, Roman, Rodriguez, Soto Martinez, Jaroslawski, 12 members present in court, Mr. President.
Very good. And what is next before us, Madam Clerk?
Counsel has motions for post and referral.
Without objection, post and referred next.
The desk is clear, sir.
Very good, thank you. Members, are there announcements? Announcements on the right. Councilmember Roman.
Well, I just wanted to say congratulations to Council President Krikorian for being the Roy Wilson Award winner for the 34th Annual Clean Air Awards hosted by the South Coast AQMD. And he received the award for his leadership in promoting clean air. I don't know whether you were actually able to attend the virtual ceremony today.
But thank you.
But I did want to lift, lift up his award today because it was, it's a, it's a nice recognition.
Very kind, and thank you very much for your long and important service as well on the AQMD board. Councilmember Hernandez.
Yes, I just wanted all of us to give a lot of love and appreciation to Councilwoman Heather Hut. It's her birthday today.
Yeah. And what better way to celebrate?
Than a long day.
All right. Councilmember McCosker.
Very brief announcement. Y'all probably remember about a month and a half ago, we had a fire incident in Wilmington, where we had two fire stations initially responded. When they got to the fire, we had an explosion of a pressurized natural gas tank, and we had nine firefighters injured from stations 38s and 49s. A whole bunch of other folks responded. We had, you know, all of the units you'd expect to be there, but those first two houses suffered injuries. And the entire city, the entire region, but certainly our communities, were very, very concerned about those firefighters. I've had people ask me almost every day since, what can we do? What can we do to help? And people have reached out and helped. I'm sure they've had a lot of ice cream and visits. But tomorrow, we're doing a community barbecue at the Town Square Park in Wilmington that will benefit each of those two houses. 38s and 49s will be there. We will be selling food and raising money that will go back to those houses because a lot of folks don't realize that firefighters have to pay for their own goods. They pay for their mattresses, they pay for their, they collect house dues, and they pay for all of their stuff, and they, I mean, we have a couple of, a couple of those stations have, you know, duct tape on their couches, and they have, you know, broken down equipment, and they have needs for, for, you know, house goods. So we're raising some money for them, and we're also showing some love and appreciation. So I'm going to ask everybody in my community to come on out tomorrow to Town Square Park at 11:00 a.m. We're going to go from 11:00 to 4:00. We'll barbecue and we'll have some fun.
$12 a plate, it's a bargain.
It's a bargain, and we'll have Uflak barbecuing, so, so it'll be a really nice event.
Very good. Other announcements, members? Any other announcements? Councilmember Deleon, announcement?
I did a, I did a German in memory of the godfather, Raymond Ray Cordoba. There will be a service for him this Sunday at 1:00 p.m., 1:00 to 3:00 p.m., if you want to go. It's going to be in Commerce, I believe the IBW headquarters, the training facility, electrical training facility, this, this Sunday, 1:00 p.m., 1:00 to 3:00 p.m.
Thank you. Any other announcements, members? Seeing none, if we could all please rise for adjourning motions. Adjourning motions on my left. Councilmember Hernandez.
Thank you, Council President. Colleagues, I would like to adjourn the meeting today in honor of the seven World Central Kitchen workers who were killed in Gaza on Monday. Saifidin Isam Ayad Abutah, age 25, had worked for World Central Kitchen as a driver and translator since the beginning of the year, relatives said. His brothers described him as a dedicated young man eager to help fellow Palestinians. Laouzawi Zomi Frankom was 43. She was kind, selfless, and an outstanding human being who traveled the world helping others in their time of need, her family said. She joined World Central Kitchen after an earlier career in banking, and she provided on-the-ground aid in Pakistan and Bangladesh during floods in 2022. Damian Sobel, 35, was a volunteer from southeastern Poland. His friends described him as a compassionate and dedicated person committed to aid work. He also volunteered in Ukraine. Jacob Flickinger, 33, was a U.S.-Canadian citizen. Mr. Flickinger's parents told the BBC that their son loved his family and his job. The work married his talents, his love for adventure, and his desire to serve and help others. John Chapman, age 57, was a British aid worker. Mr. Chapman's family said they were devastated to have lost an incredible father, husband, son, and brother, and that he was loved by many and will forever be a hero. James Henderson, 33, was a former roofer from Britain and served for six years in the Royal Marines. Following his exit from the military in 2016, he had worked a series of personal security jobs before volunteering to work with WCK. James Kirby, 47. James was always willing to lend a helping hand to anyone, even in the face of senseless violence, his family said. James lost his life trying to save others. He will never know what a void he has left our family, and our family will never be the same. I ask that we hold each of them, their friends and family, and the World Central Kitchen Organization, close as they grieve this terrible loss. As humanitarian workers, they dedicated themselves to providing meals and relief to thousands of people who are suffering from widespread hunger and incredible devastation. They had just finished unloading 100 tons of food at a warehouse in central Gaza when they were killed. They leave behind a legacy of love, compassion, and bravery, a reminder that our humanity is tied to one another, and a call for the global community to carry on their legacy and ensure the people of Gaza have access to food, water, and safety. May these heroes rest in the warm embrace of our ancestors, and may everyone who continues to suffer the terrors of war soon know peace. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Soto Martinez?
First of all, thank you, Councilmember Hernandez, for, for bringing this today. You know, I would like to be added to this adjourning motion, and, you know, I think we're all seeing what's happening in, in Gaza right now, and this one in particularly really, really touched me, in particular because these were folks that were feeding people that were starving. And as someone who worked in the hospitality industry and grew up poor and oftentimes went to bed hungry, it's just, it really, it really made me very sad. And so thank you for bringing this in, and, you know, I hope the world hears this call and we continue to work for everlasting peace, you know. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other motions for adjournment, members? All right. Seeing none, go forth and serve the city well. Have a good weekend, everyone. This meeting is adjourned.